Greenfield City Council, May 19, 2021, the 217th Regular and FY 2022 Annual Budget. Wait a second, let's see. Okay. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCTV-15. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Okay, Madam Chair, could I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Edward Jarvis, Councilor Jarvis?
Here.
Councilor Gwynn?
President.
Councilor Disorger?
Here.
Councilor Bottomley?
Here.
Councilor Dolan?
Here.
Councilor Gilmore?
Here.
Councilor Wheeler?
Here.
Councilor Mayo?
Here.
Councilor Herschel? Councilor Herschel? Madam President, I'll come back to him. Councilor Elmer?
Here.
Councilor Forghee?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Here.
Councilor Stumpel Ray?
Present.
Councilor Herschel? I do not see that he is in attendance, however, I will try to make a note of it when he does attend the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and this is totally voluntary. Okay? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the republic, for which this is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the April 21st and May 4th City Council meetings.
So moved, Councilor.
Senator Stumpel?
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain. Okay, at this time, I'd like to hear communications from the Superintendent of Schools and the School Committee.
Good evening, President Ricketts. I don't see Chair Proietti on the meeting with us this evening, but I'm certainly happy to address the City Council. It's nice to be here and see you all again. It's a busy time here in the Greenfield Public Schools. We are dealing with a very rapidly changing environment with regard to COVID-19. The Commissioner has put out new guidance around mask wearing in accordance with lifting some restrictions that we're trying to work through. And the School Committee is meeting tomorrow afternoon at 2:00 PM to amend their current face coverings policy to be in compliance with both the Commissioner's guidance and the new guidance that has come out from the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association, again regarding the removal of masks from children when they're outdoors and engaging in sports, recess, or outdoor classes. So I was on the call with the Commissioner this afternoon, and things are changing very quickly as the Governor has moved his guidelines for reopening the state up a little bit. So we're trying to just make sure we stay on top of things and have things in order from a policy perspective on our part. So we're moving forward with contract negotiations with four bargaining units right now. So there's a lot of meetings and work involved in all of that. And are in the process also of looking for a new Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning in the District to reestablish a curriculum office. So that search is just getting underway, and my understanding is that the search for the permanent superintendent is also moving along quite nicely. So those are the high points to report to the Council this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Do any councilors have any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to be toggling on and off of video for everyone on the call. I have my daughter with me, so I just want to put that out there. So when I speak, I will make sure that you all can see me.
Will you say your name too? So, because some people are on phones, please.
Yeah, so my name is Councilor Ashley Stumpel Ray. So I have a question for you, more or less. I don't, I'm not saying that we've been behind the ball, because of course it's a pandemic, but I did feel a little bit like we started the pandemic at the tail end of the 2019 school, I would say 2019, 2020 school year. And then some parents felt we had the entire summer to kind of prepare for what 2020, 2021 school year would bring. And so there was a lot of dismay when it took us a little while to ramp up and get all students into the building. So what I'm curious about is, obviously, you've taken on a lot very quickly. I'm curious what planning is being done to prepare for the 2021, 2022 school year and what we can look forward to focusing on over the summer. I know it's May, but, and maybe I'm just a planner by nature, but if I were in this role, I would be already thinking about like, what do we need to put in place to succeed for next year?
What I heard from the Commissioner again this afternoon was that he is putting some recommendations in front of the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education around what in-person learning would look like next year, with possibly the elimination of any distancing requirements, masks he wasn't quite sure about yet. But again, this landscape seems to be changing very rapidly with the Governor first precipitating that over the weekend and then the Commissioner responding very shortly thereafter. So we have not gotten complete guidance yet from the DESI. That's basically what drives those decisions. But the Commissioner tells us it is forthcoming as soon as the Board meets, which I believe is next week. So that we'll at least be able to have something by the beginning of June as a roadmap to be able to plan for the reopening of schools in the fall.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Forghee?
Thank you. A quick question. You just mentioned that you were in a search for an Assistant Superintendent, and I wonder if that money is currently in the requested budget for 2022?
We have done some shifting of responsibilities within the Central Office, and so we are going to be able to cover about half that salary with a Central Office position. We're also looking at funding it through grants so that it would be cost neutral in terms of the budget that we have put forward. So we believe that we can certainly cover that position between grants and the General Fund without looking for any additional appropriation.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, thank you so much. Don't worry, we'll come heavy to you in the future. We just have a good night ahead of us.
Absolutely.
But welcome.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so next, communications from the Mayor, City Officers, and Employees.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors and members of the public who are on this call. In the interest of time, I'm going to forego any updates, messages, and so forth in favor of sending councilors an email about some of the things that we're working on in the Mayor's office. So tonight, I present my FY 22 operating budget as I presented to you in April. While I would have loved to present a very robust budget with what I know we should have in order to restore the city to its pre-pandemic levels, I couldn't do that because I simply, we simply can't afford it at this point in time. We do look forward to brighter days in FY 23 and FY 24 with renewed revenues coming in as we crawl out of this pandemic. The Mayor's FY 22 budget has no agenda. It does not favor one department over another. It plainly and simply provides us with the funds we need to responsibly and sustainably operate the city of Greenfield. It was created under guidelines presented to me and department heads in consultation with Finance Director Liz Gilman. Those guidelines were to take a bottom level, bottom line, level-funded approach that would allow for contractual increases negotiated with our union employees and a 1% increase over other non-contractual employees, including myself. So it represents a 1.1 overall increase in budget over FY 21. And that's due to contractual obligation, rising costs and expenses, or rising expenses due to rising costs in goods, and in some departments, filling a need for staffing, additional hours, and other outliers related to effective operation of those departments. So you will see some modest increases in budgets. You will also see where departments were able to achieve overall budget cuts in their departments. And those, in particular, are DPW, Police, and Fire Departments. Most of those cuts were in salaries and wages. Our department heads and our Finance Director Liz Gilman are here to answer your questions. And with that, I will turn it over to Finance Director Liz Gilman to give you and the public a brief overall presentation of the FY 22 budget and some of its drivers and implications.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So before Liz begins, do any councilors have any questions or comment for the Mayor? Because we're not going to be able to ping pong back and forth throughout the whole meeting. So if we have something in particular you'd like to bring forward now? Okay, Ms. Gilman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is not allowing me to share content. So if you don't mind, I'm going to sign on and see if it will allow me to share content. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Is there a setting with a host or?
I don't know what's going on. It's just not allowing me to share content. So I am going to do it from my other laptop.
Can you talk us through it?
I can talk you through it. It's just, there's a lot of graphs that are good to see. I'm just going to try and...
Liz, can you email it to me and I can share it?
Yes, dear, I can, actually. That's a really good idea.
First rodeo.
I know. Let's see. Email. I'm sorry I'm being so slow. Really, really sorry. It's coming. I wonder why you're not coming up, Ashley. Oh, there we go. Councilor Stumpel. All right. Here it comes. This is bizarre because I shared it last time. So I apologize.
Oh, so we have seen it. You just wanted to reinforce some of the...
Right. Well, some people saw it. Ways and Means saw it. Those only ways. Right. I'm still going to try and sign on in case Ashley can't.
I see, I have a share button right there. I'm waiting for it to...
I have the share button, but it's not letting me. Because you are listed as the presenter. Yeah? Yeah. Technology. It's great.
I'm loading it now. I got it.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just keep getting circles. Bizarre.
The world of technology, anything goes.
That's right.
The blue wheel of death.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, can I drive or does it?
Just tell me, I'll drive. You tell me when did it go.
Okay. Okay.
I do this for a living, so this is just for me.
All right, there's one special slide that I'm really going to have to talk to you about. And you do have to click through it. So this was presented...
No, no, this is good.
Okay. So I wanted to go through the basic components of the budget because, A, last year, we were in the middle of a pandemic, and we had a lot of new councilors. So I just felt to really go through the actual process and explain it. So the first part of the budget is to develop a budget schedule, and this is done per charter so that we meet the deadlines of the charter, and we give it out to folks at the beginning of October. If you want to click again, next is the revenue, and this is important for doing the parameters that we give to departments on the third click for their expenditure budgets. If you can go to the next slide. The revenue components are, click, property tax, B, net state aid, which is your cherry sheet revenue minus your cherry sheet assessments, your local receipts, and finally, one more click, other available funds, and indirect costs. And when I get an estimate for this, I give the departments the parameters that the Mayor actually spoke about of level funding honoring union contract obligations and no more than 1% for non-union. So anyway, that's one more click, I believe. Yeah, the parameters were given out. So next I'm going to go through on the next slide. This is a breakdown of the revenue budget, and it has lots of clicks, I'm sorry. But it's so much better. It breaks it out by percentage. So if you keep clicking, 60.9%, no, okay, is property tax. And then another click, you get to state aid for 29.5%. Local receipts are 7.4%. And available funds and indirects round out the last 2.2%. But it is interesting to see how it's broken up. Property tax is the largest. That's the next screen. And it's the hardest to understand for folks, I think, because of all the terminology. It's two and a half times the prior tax levy, and I'm going to show you this form. Then, next click, you add new growth, which is like new residential or commercial construction. A new business comes into town with personal property or a piece of property that wasn't on the tax roll comes back on. One more click. Valuation isn't a factor in the maximum tax levy, and I will show you this on the next screen. This is the actual form I fill out. The yellow we start out with is the levy limit, and that's in the 36,586,281. So we take 2.5% of that, that's the light, bluey-purple, 914,657. And then we add new growth, and it is important to remember that just maintenance is not new growth. So for example, if you have an old dilapidated building and the individual takes out a building permit to replace the roof, it may still be a dilapidated building. And so what matters in the assessment is whether the condition changed. Does it move from dilapidated up to poor? Or that's what matters in a change in an assessment. That just, the building permit is like a notice to the assessor that something's going to change. The amounts on it are not any kind of one-to-one correlation to growth. So anyway, you add those three together, and you come to the darker purple levy limit. And if a community has a debt exclusion or a capital exclusion, or perhaps a new override, on the next screen, please. In the yellow, the city of Greenfield has a high school debt exclusion. That's $1,421,350. So you can add that to the levy limit to come out to a maximum levy of 39,122,288. Now, the city does, that's the maximum the city can levy. The city does not have to levy that much. The next piece, next slide I'm going to talk about is tax levy and valuation. So how does the valuation work into this? If you could click through this, the first is, the tax levy is divided by the valuation to get, times 1,000 to get the tax rate. So in other words, next click, the valuation divides up or allocates the tax levy. It doesn't create the tax levy. So where does the tax levy come from? It's the budget less local receipts, net state aid, and available funds and indirects. The next piece, next slide, please. It's called net state aid. We base our budget on the Governor's numbers. And so what I'm going to show you is a three-year history of the January Governor's numbers. If you could click on the, here we go, and one more click. As you can tell, it's actually down from last year's Governor's budget, $136,0589. And graphically, on the next slide, that looks like this. And if we can go to the next slide, I'm going to show you the final cherry sheet for '21 versus the Governor's numbers. And two more clicks, that's actually down $62,958. House Ways and Means, or Senate Ways and Means, just released their budget too, and it's still in line with this. It's actually slightly worse, it's $63,000. So it's trending this way. The next aspect of revenue I want to talk about is local receipts. And this is a chart I've selected for you, certain local receipts that I've seen declines in. So the yellow is what I'm budgeting for this year. And the blue and red are prior years what we've been able to budget. And you can see it's going down. The largest ones that were on decline were parking meter, parking tickets, hotel tax, Medicaid reimbursement. And that's not a surprise as a result of the pandemic. But as you can see, you may understand now the guidelines we sent out to departments with negative net state aid increase and a decline in local receipts. The next slide, this is lots of clicking, actually. I don't know. There is some good news. If you can do a couple clicks here. You see that little sound? Do you want to make click the sound? You don't have to. Yeah, it's not working. Okay, that's okay. So another click, the good news is...
Woo-hoo!
The good news is that there is cannabis revenue. And there's two more clicks. Local receipts for this year are $208,405, and that significantly helps with the reduction in the local receipts that I just showed you. It really has helped a lot. And one more click. We have cannabis that goes to an OPEB stabilization, and that so far this year is $129,574. And this is the first year we're actually utilizing some of that to assist with the operating budget for retiree benefits. And, you know, the cannabis revenue has been good to the city of Greenfield. So the next revenue, if we can go on, the last piece is the other available funds. I talked about the parking meter receipts being down. Another click, I think there's four on this. We're utilizing the OPEB stabilization for the first time. There's a very minimal amount of free cash, which is our policy. And then there's indirects for Water, Sewer, and G-Set Enterprise. One more click. That basically is things like health insurance and retirement that are in the General Fund that actually are costs for these three enterprise funds, and they transfer that as revenue to the city. So the next thing, thank you, I'm going to give you a graphic breakdown of the $54 million budget presented. 38.7% is education. 30.9% is fixed costs. 13.4% is public safety. 8.4% is general government. 5.2% is Public Works. And Health and Human Services, Culture and Rec, and FERCAG round out the last 3.4%. So what does this mean on the next slide? A couple clicks, overall increase of $593,078 or 1.1. And for the city's operating budget, the overall salaries is actually down $19,000. So departments really did come through on level funding their budgets. Some of the, next slide, please. Some of the major drivers for this $593,000 increase, retirement, $354,000. There's three more. Franklin Tech, $137,000. Technology is up 82, and the last is health insurance at 68. I want you to remember the retirement and the health insurance, because the next slide I'm going to show you is a breakdown of that 30.88 fixed costs that I showed you in the first graph on the expenditure budget. Employee benefits is 26.46. That's things like pension, health insurance, unemployment, Medicare, life insurance, workers' comp. This is for every single department. Also included in that is property and liability insurance for every single department. And then debt service for every single department. So overall, it is a significant amount of the budget. So for example, when you vote the Public Works budget number, there's actually more costs associated with Public Works because all the employees have all the benefits. There's property and liability insurance, and there's some debt service for Public Works. So the next screen I'm going to show you is a better example of this. And it's a report we have to do every single year. If you could click that again. And it's for the department, there's maybe two more clicks. It's for the Department of Education. And in the blue column, you will see, and this is the actual report downloaded from DESI. In the blue column, you will see this is what the school spent out of the School Committee appropriation except for transportation, which is $1.3 million. And then in the yellow column, you'll see all those benefits I talked about. And there's also things like school choice sending and charter school assessment, and that's $10,605. And if you add the blue and yellow column together, you come out with a total... you come out with a total of 29,234,214. And these are costs that count toward net school spending. For example, debt service and Franklin Tech are not in the yellow column as well. So we're required to spend 23,758. So we're basically 5.5 million over net school spending, which is higher than our comparables. So I just think this is a really good representation of how those fixed costs really consume a lot of every single department's budget. And it's, that is the area, if we want to try and free up funds, that there's one possibility to be looking at because it benefits everyone. The next example I want to give you, if we can, is the tax rate. So it's being proposed at 2373. There's probably four clicks in here. That is a 51 cent increase, 2.2%. And it's about $104 on the average single-family tax bill. One more click, 867 a month. I do expect that this is going to be lower. The ARP, or American Recovery Plan, has come out. And there is some revenue replacement in that. The problem is, they haven't come out with the logistics of how it will work. So this money, the revenue replacement could be a local receipt. That would be very easy. It would reduce this. It could be an available fund that would have to be voted. Or they may have us close it and have it close out to free cash as a reimbursement. They just have not put out the guidance on it. But I do think overall this will be lower than what we are presenting you. So I can take any questions. I think that's, yes. Thank you, Ashley, so very much.
Yes, thank you, Councilor. Do any councilors have questions or comments at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Liz a question. This is Doug Mayo.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Mayo.
Back on the, back to the cherry sheet changes between last year and this year.
Yep.
You said that there was significant changes or, or what was, what was the change again?
The change was negative. That's all the point I'm putting out. It wasn't an increase. So you're kind of expecting an increase each year, you know? Actually, it was negative. So between that and local receipts, it was difficult.
By a very significant amount?
From the governor's budget, 139,000. From the final cherry sheet, about 63,000.
So that is a significant, that is a significant drop in what Greenfield gets from the situation.
Yeah, net state aid, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor DeSorogah?
Hi, Director Gilman. I have two questions. The revenue from cannabis, that was, I think you said 208 or 228? Part of that went into OPEB stabilization. What, where was the rest of that going?
Okay, there's two sources of the cannabis. One we voted as to go directly into a OPEB stabilization. That is the one that is the tax. The 3% goes to the state and then it comes back, okay? Then there's a hosting fee that's done locally where the business actually writes us a check. So they're, it's together. So it's actually 330,000 this year. So that, the one that the businesses write a check goes to local receipts. So there's two sources. You have to add them together.
Follow up, I may?
Yes.
So, so part of that went into OPEB. But the rest of it doesn't. Where does the rest of it go, is my question?
Local receipts.
Okay, all right. All right. And last question. You showed us the graph with how our local receipts were going in different things. Could you, just for the benefit of everyone, what was the amount of that decrease about? Not to, if you don't
So you go from, I'm going to go from like 20 because this kind of started in 20. Total decrease is about 650,657, if you added them all together. And I'm going from 20 to 22. But this has gone over. The pandemic touched part of 20, and it certainly touched 21. So between 20 to what we have budgeted, it's about 657,000 decline. But the cannabis helped.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Stimple Ray?
Just following up to Councilor DeSorogah. I think what she was asking, and what I'm curious about too, Director Gilman, is, is the remaining part of the cannabis, is that unrestricted from free cash? And where do we anticipate that money going funding part of the budget?
So every local receipt is general fund revenue, okay? And all general fund revenue closes to free cash. Does that explain it?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Okay, do any other councilors have any questions or comments at this time? Mayor, do you have any other employees of the city that you would like to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you very much, President Ricketts. I'd like for Chief Hague to bring his numbers that he was requested to do at the last meeting on the renovations, rehabilitation, whatever you want to call it, of the police department. And that is, that goes to your capital budget item where you're taking from the table the police department of renovations. He was asked to provide more information on what was needed and what the costs could be. These are estimates. I think he'll explain that to you. And he is here, ready to speak.
Okay, thank you. Chief Hague?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
I know it's not as, you said earlier, but I think with people volunteering their time, anybody knows. To go about, when you're not paying somebody, you're kind of at, you can't really make demands that need to be done on your timetable when you're getting voluntary work done. But I thank both those individuals that came to the station, met with me on different occasions, and then worked together to kind of come up with these numbers. Again, this was a Phase 1 of Phase 3 type of program. And I put my priorities of where I thought they should be. A couple of them are accreditation-based. Several of them are quality and life-based. And we're not moving out of that building. So unfortunately, I realize the building is older and some people will say it's not worth putting anything into it. But if you're not moving us out of there, I think we need to do something to it to keep us there. As far as the numbers go, the garage, which would be a masonry stone garage, because wood and steel right now is really volatile and expensive. And depending on when we build and buy materials, that number could change. That 290,000 is for a 3,600 square foot two-story garage in Masonry and Stone, which would actually put a new hole in the wall into the booking room, which would address some safety concerns that we have under our temporary garage that we have right now, where if you came and saw it, I know several of you did, and I appreciate that. It's a safety, it's a major safety concern. So this would address that in the long run as far as the booking area for safety there. The booking area, I know there's some that have questioned why that's not on this. I can just tell you, it's going to be way more money for a modern cell block. We do fail every year. We get the, we get the warning every year that we're grandfathered, but just to let us know that we have safety issues in there, such as suicide risks. And we get that paperwork every single year. We know it's coming. But we are grandfathered in because we've been there for as long as we have. So we don't have to change anything. However, if we do change it, it's got to come to code. The eight-foot security fence, which would surround the backside of the building, which has doors and other equipment that's right now accessible to the outside world, that's, that is an accreditation issue. That was approximately a $40,000 cost to encase the backside because if you've been there, it's a steep drop-off. And that needs to be addressed. The reason for the blacktop and the carport to be moved and reconfigured is because of that new garage area that's going to go in to deal with the cell block issue. And if we're going to tear up the parking lot to re-grade it just for that garage, then it makes sense to redo the whole parking lot all at the same time and move and rebuild the structure for the carport. Now, the carport was built a very long time ago. The vehicles are not the same size as they were a long time ago. They're bigger than they were. So this would address that as well as outside storage, which we have right now that is going to be taken down as part of the garage build. The reason for the bathrooms, and I realize there was some question about that. We currently have five female officers, one supervisor. We do not have enough space for the five now. Never mind if we add more females, which I plan to do. So we need to treat the women the same way we're treating men. The men have bigger locker rooms with amenities, and they have a supervisor locker room. Our women, police officers, do not. The reason for the change in this would be to create gender-neutral changing rooms that have independent showers, toilets, and changing areas that can be used by men and women. And that's where the change would be. Then we could have one locker room that is shared, and we don't, we eliminate the ability or the need to have separate locker rooms and readjust every time we hire additional women on the job. That's a big cost because it's on a slab. And to put shower bays back there, where the detective bureau currently is, if you had come to see it, that's a big undertaking, which means we have to move the detective bureau, which we would do, move them into the center of the building, into a single room that has no ventilation and currently no natural light. So we would be adding natural light through the roof to accommodate this. I have a, for the dispatch room, and this is just to expand the size because if you, like I said, again, if you came in, you would see how small that room is. And that would take down the wall just to open up the dispatch area. This does not account for security doors, any type of bulletproof glass or anything else. We would have to adjust that based on what we were allotted. The rough cost for the architect, which was, which was an estimate by an architect that we worked with, was going to be about 160 grand for the architectural work. Again, I realize it's 1.3 I'm asking for. This comes to 1.7. This is why I was stressing that we need somebody else to come in, give us real numbers, and then determine what we can do based on the money that we have. I can take any questions if you need.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, you broke up with, when you were relaying some of the numbers to us. And I wanted to go back and ask you, how much was some of the money that was, that you told us, but you broke up and, and I didn't hear it? So how much to, for the blacktop?
The blacktop was an estimate of, for grading and blacktop and the moving of the covered parking area, which came to 250,000, estimated.
Okay, just one second. I got one, a couple other follow-up questions.
This is all in that email that you have.
Now, is this, is that, is that covered both the blacktop and the carport? Is that both $250?
The carport, the storage is 400,000.
And the roof?
Roof for the building is not included in this.
Okay, because you mentioned, you mentioned roof at one point.
We have leaks all over the building, but we plug and plug.
I know, I know that, but yeah, they're, they're not. And you said security doors are the
We have to replace a few doors. If you came down and saw it, you can see daylight on the back of the building, and the dispatch door has to be replaced.
So are you planning on using the, some money for, in this year or this appropriation for the security doors? Was that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have an estimate on the doors?
I'll have to figure that out inside whatever number that we come up with.
Okay, all right.
I didn't have time to have a door person come in and do this.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Mayo. Councilor Elmer, and then Councilor Dolan.
Hi, Chief Hague. Thank you very much for providing those numbers. One of the things that I was shown while I visited that needed fixing was the camera system that apparently some key cameras, which are supposed to record things, aren't working. Is that, have you included that in this budget?
I think so.
We're working with IT on that. These have been problems that we identified beforehand. So that'll be an IT issue. So that's not part of this, no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Dolan and Councilor Hirschfeld?
Hi, Chief Hague. I have a persistent question, and you may or may not be able to answer it because I know you were, you were not chief at the time. But this current building was renovated in 1999. I find it really surprising that facilities for female officers were not put in at that point. And that was not that long ago. I think the trends in employment were pretty apparent at that point. Do you have an explanation for that?
I was not part of the build, so I couldn't tell you. But I agree 100% with you. It's, it makes zero sense to me.
Follow up, Councilor Dolan, or are you all set?
No, thank you, just curious.
Okay. Didn't know if your cat wanted to speak. Okay, Councilor Hirschfeld?
Hi, Chief Hague. Thank you for your input on this. Have you thought of the difficulty of doing any renovation while keeping the whole, whole department running? I mean, I find it really difficult when you're, you want to do some serious renovation and keeping everything running. I assume you're not really expanding that much.
There's really no expansion outside of obviously building a new garage onto it. Dispatch would have to be moved temporarily while the work is done in there. We would either have to work with Montague, or we do have the ability to bring in an outdoor trailer, which has been done before for other, other events that we, that we would have to work with 911. But there is the ability to move a temporary outside facility while the build is being conducted.
Would that take care of all your, your needs for, for your whole department?
I, I mean, we would be working out of our cars. We would have to make whatever work, you know? If we have to use some arrangements for detainees being booked somewhere else at that time, then we're going to have to figure that out when we go.
That's kind of iffy.
It is, but it's not something that hasn't been done in the past.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. Councilor Jarvis?
Yeah, this is kind of just a, kind of a, it helped Norm understand. The Greenfield Fire Department years ago went through a major renovation, and we were able to operate 24/7. So there's ways for the, for the So there's ways for the, for the, for the, for the public safety to figure out how to, how to make this happen. I mean, we had, we had missing bay doors for four doors and so, uh, and, and the station was wide open and there was people coming and going. And so I'm sure, I'm sure the, the chief, but just to let you know that, 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 that the town has done it before and it's worked before. So, and I was there during that renovation and it was a little hard, but we worked through it.
Okay. Did any other counselors have a question? We have him right here now, so. Okay, so I guess I would ask a question and.
I have a question as, as well.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I, I just wanted to, you can go ahead.
Thank, thank you. President, I am going to go ahead and I'll circle back, okay? I promise. So I would like to ask if for some reason our council decides to reduce funding. I don't know how much that would be. Do you have like a priority list in your mind? Like, would you like to do the, um, locker rooms and the dispatch first and is like the paving, would that be like more on the bottom of the list, do you think? And get the fence at the top in the booking area? It might be a.
The booking area wouldn't be able to be done without the, uh, garage, so.
Okay.
Again, it comes down to what's left there for money because obviously even if I got the 1.35, it's still not enough to do all, all the projects that I would have done on phase one. Again, we're also looking at a time where the cost of materials is, is so unpredictable right now. And it's, and wood is, is double if not triple and steel is changing every single week. Um, these are rough estimates based on what is going on right now. Again, by the time things get done, maybe it's in a different direction, maybe it's not. But I do think that, that dispatch is a priority. That's a quality life issue. Um, I, I think we start looking at, um, the direction of our department. Do we want to, do we want to, you know, expand or replace or, or bring in other officers? Um, I, that locker room is going to be a problem. It's a problem now. So that's not going away. Um, so I, I don't know. I'd honestly have to look at what, what the council approves and then my priority list may or may not change. It's really hard to tell. We need the fence around the back of the building.
Right.
And we need, we need the garage done and we need the safety addressed for the, the booking area. Uh, those are priorities, but again, if it gets reduced, then back to the drawing board.
Thank you so much, Chief. Okay, Counselor Mayo, would you like to ask a question or make a comment?
Uh, I would like to ask a question, please. Thank you. And this is, and this is to the chief. I did some quick adding up of the numbers that you gave us. Um, and it does not include some of the question marks because you said you didn't have prices for those yet. Uh, because either the, uh, a, a, a door person wasn't able to get there or.
I didn't even call the door person. I knew I wouldn't get anybody there.
Yeah, yeah.
Ultimately, I'm, I'm going to have to replace the door this year. I can't, I can't wait a year for a door that, that lets air in from the outside that I can see. And that's got to be done. Uh, you know, dispatch is going to have to be dealt with now. That's, that's not something that can be done.
Right. But my question is, but, uh, my question is, so far I've added up to, uh, uh, a million dollars, uh, and 140,000 dollars. Uh, so that's, that's with four question marks that you say are, uh, imperative. Um, so, uh, that goes, um, that's a lot of money and that's, um, that's a lot of money for, uh, four question marks that are, are going to be, uh, I think a lot of money, uh, like the roof and the, and the doors. And, uh, that doesn't, that does not include the money for the architect. Um, so.
You have my email, sir. It's all in my email. The, the numbers are right there. The email was sent to everybody two days ago. The numbers are broken out there. Um, the architect right there in my email says 160,000 dollars.
Right. But, but based on the items that you just listed, um, it, it comes out to a hundred or one million, 140,000 dollars. And, um, let's see, or, excuse me, it does include, it does include the architect. Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, but it doesn't, but it does not include the roof, the doors. Uh, there's a question mark on the car park and, and the blacktop. So there's, those are four, um, major pieces that are kind of question marks that, um, uh, potentially could be very expensive.
All, all of this could be very expensive, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Uh, and, and I know that you're, uh, some of the things are even going to be even more expensive down the road. Uh, but I, and I, I know what, what can you do? There's, as you said, equipment, uh, equipment and, uh, building equipment is at an all-time high and you got to do what you got to do. Um, but that doesn't mean you have to do it all at once. I mean, this building, uh, my understanding of this building was, um, this, when you, uh, when you guys moved into it, it had, uh, it had, it had a 30-year, not, not when you moved into it, when it was built, it had a 30-year lease. And when you guys went into it, it had 20 more years onto it. And then there was also, uh, some, uh, build-ons, uh, to the building, um, that was in, spoke, spoken about already. And I, I just, uh, I understand, you know, things have changed about, uh, uh, equity and needing, uh, um, showers and things of that nature and locker rooms for other women, women. But, uh, um, I think that this list needs to be, uh, um, you said, for instance, the fence, um, is accredited, uh, is the only one that you mentioned was accreditation, uh, based.
So is the garage.
Okay, that one, that one, okay.
Okay.
That's a temporary structure on our building right now. Yep, that's a temporary structure right now.
Okay, so, uh, and that's a, that's accreditation. So let me mark, let me mark that one down. Um, okay.
Do you have a follow-up, Counselor Mayo, or are you all set?
No, I, I'm, I'm fine with what I have. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Counselor DeSorga.
Hi, thank you, Chief Hague, and thanks for getting all of that information together. Um, I just had a question on, um, dispatch. Um, where, uh, where we haven't put a pen to the paper yet or for the fire station. Um, could they move there until we can build you the new police station that you need?
I don't think the fire department has a, a part of that that is dispatch. If I'm, if I'm wrong on that, somebody can tell me, but I don't think that, that square footage is part of, uh, the fire station plans.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeSorga. Um, Counselor Gwynn.
Thank you, President Ricketts. Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, Chief Hague for putting together the emails he sent out in the beginning of the week. That's exactly what I asked for in the prior meeting. It spelled out, uh, where that money was, where it was falling, his best estimates at the time for doing it. That made it very clear to all of us that went through it to find out where, where this money was going. It helped to clarify, um, some of the issues that we were having last meeting. I know it was last minute and you hustled to get it done, but it was very much appreciated. Uh, so when we have the vote tonight, um, I can talk from more specifics than, than a general fund and I appreciate the time it took. And it was obvious, uh, from Counselor Mayo's comments that, that, uh, you need more money and, and I'll do our best in the future to make sure you get that. Thank you.
Thank you. Like I said, it was one of those things that we knew was going to be a hot number just based on cost right now, but.
So, um, who is, um, telling me in chat that they can answer Counselor DeSorga's question?
Oh, that would be the ma, that would be the mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, go ahead.
I just wanted to address Jenny's question regarding dispatch moving to the fire station. When we had to, because of budgetary issues, substantially reduce, um, the budget, um, to accommodate the 16 million dollars, the dispatch piece was not included. So they're in the drawings that we have now. Dispatch is not included.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor DeSorga, do you have a follow-up or are you all set? Okay, so at this time, before we move on, I want to remind all counselors that Chief Hague is here, the mayor, and Liz Gilman, and I believe there's some other department heads here. This is a good time to ask questions before we get started because we will be in deliberation soon. Um, Counselor Elmer.
Yes, Chief Hague. Do I understand you correctly that although the total cost you would like is 1.676 million, that you would find a way to live within 1.35 million?
Um, so, so Counselor, when, when we were putting this together, I kind of went with what my phase one wish list was and that's what came out to that number. So obviously I, the, the request that went in was just the 1.35. So if it was the 1.35 that was approved, then I would have to, you know, work within that. So we'd have to eliminate something, obviously. But yeah, I mean, I'm not, obviously it's too late to go up in value. Um, but we would have to work within that 1.35 and that would be working with an architect to determine what gets cut out and, and what stays for this phase. These were just the identifiers that I had in that first phase that made the most sense. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So again, counselors, since we have the mayor and the chief and Liz Gilman and other department heads, are there any questions before we get started? Okay, seeing none. I want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Liz. Um, wait, hold on. Counselor Hirschfeld? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry I came in late to the meeting.
That's okay.
I do have a question in terms of, uh, the money. Is there a time limit in terms of, uh, uh, when we, uh, have to approve or disapprove of this? Um, in terms of, uh, uh, this budget?
Are you asking Liz Gilman or do you want to ask the?
Please, Liz. Sorry.
Um, no problem. Um, Liz Gilman, are you still with us?
I am. Um, in terms of the, the police chief's, uh, capital request.
Yes.
Got your question? Okay.
That is correct.
Well, there, there isn't a time limit in terms of, um, budgetary constraints. There's a time limit, I think, and you need to hear from the chief, on when he has to address and get moving on these things. Um, so from a financial perspective, um, it's, it's not going to have a budgetary impact. Um, and you know, right now it was tabled to this meeting, correct? So, um, you, you could poss, in terms of, of methodology, you could do that. However, the chief has deadlines that, that would impact.
Thank you.
Okay. Follow up, Counselor Hirschfeld, or are you?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Counselor Mayo and the, oop, um, point of order from Counselor Dolan. I'm sorry. Counselor Dolan.
Point of information, I wanted to follow up with, uh, Director Gilman. Um, I understand that in budgetary terms, there's no limit, but there are implications on the bonding cycle about when we make this decision, right? So when would be too late to bond these funds with our?
Now, bonding is different from bands. So.
Oh, okay.
So we would be doing short-term borrowing and that's why it doesn't. Believe me, we're going to have plenty of bonding opportunities coming up in the next few years.
That's very helpful. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
And so Counselor Mayo, did that answer a question you were just going to bring up or?
No, it did not.
Okay, go, please go ahead.
I do, I, I do have a question.
Okay.
Uh, at the last meeting, we, uh, numbers were thrown back and forth, back and forth about what we could, um, uh, you know, what, uh, what the chief could work with. And the last number that he said that he could work with was 600,000 dollars. That was before leaving the meeting. It, it is part of the record. So I don't appreciate people shaking their head. It's part of the record. That's, uh, he said, "Just give me 600,000 dollars. I can live with that." It's part of the record. Now, given that, I don't want to make enemies tonight. That's not part of my job. My, my job is to bring the truth out. So, we're, given, given that, we've, we've already talked about a million dollars, uh, in just this phase one project. How does that fit into, "I can live with 600,000 dollars", which I believe is, is, is phase one priority that he was talking about?
Okay.
Wait a quarter. Are we, are we deliberating or are you asking questions?
Thank you.
Uh, that was a question.
Okay, so before we, we go on, um, since Counselor Fordy is the chair of Ways and Means, I'm going to let her speak first and see what her regulation is.
Thank you. Um, the 600,000 dollars was a compromise piece and I was the one who actually proposed the six, um, 600,000. Um, there did, there was not any interest in that particular money, uh, money amount, that dollar amount. I had made the motion to do that and it was seconded by, um, Counselor Wheeler. There was a lot of discussion. Um, then, uh, I went, I removed the motion and Counselor Wheeler, after a discussion, agreed to remove the motion. What I remember hearing the chief said is that this piece of the budget is so urgent that he will accept any dollar amount that the council votes to him because it, it, it has an urgency to it. So, um, I just wanted to be able to comment on it. It just seems to me that at this point, because it was removed, it was a discussion piece. And so I don't think anybody agreed to the 600,000 dollars. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the clarification. So at this time, I'm ready to move on if all counselors are ready and have. Last call? Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, everyone. So, the next please is public comment. So for public comment, you will have your three minutes. Um, if you signed up for the public hearing, that will follow next. So for the public comment, and if they happen to be muted when they begin, we'll have, um, Madam Clerk let people know. 13 people don't have to say, "You're muted." Okay? They just need to hear it once. So let's begin. So the first person I have is Molly Merritt. first person I have is Molly Merritt. State your name and address, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Molly Merritt, Solar Way in Greenfield. Um, I am here to urge the council to vote against the fiscal year '22 capital budget allocation for the 1.35 million dollars for the police station upgrades, which was tabled from the April meeting. Um, this proposed plan is not a smart use of city capital, and the process honestly has felt deeply, deeply undemocratic. Um, Chief Hague could have submitted a detailed financial order last fall when other department heads were obtaining votes and doing just that. Instead, we only see specific project estimates emerge two days before the second meeting on the subject. Members of the public, including myself, only saw that information at that time because many of us have been regularly contacting councilors to ask if there have been any updates. Other people are probably hearing this information right now for the first time, and we simply don't have enough time for a meaningful debate around this. Um, I'm particularly upset by the request for $94,000 to reconfigure the garage parking lot and the carport. This seems like a prime example of what has been described by some as a want instead of a need. A million dollars could go a long way to providing something useful to our community, like desperately needed affordable housing. I also want to say, the police chief has been acting like he is a victim in this situation, and I really hope that we do not forget that people are actually suffering and dying in Greenfield because they lack housing, healthcare, non-punitive substance use support, and healthy food. We need a budget that prioritizes health, giving life-affirming support to the people who live here. Again, I urge you to please reject this wasteful proposal, and let's have a real dialogue about how to spend our resources to build a better community.
Thank you. John McGee?
Can you hear me?
Yes, can. Thank you.
Okay, hi. Uh, so my name is John McGee, Myrtle Street, Greenfield. I'm part of the Greenfield People's Budget. First, I want to thank the councilors and the mayor for all your hard work keeping the city running during a hard year. I also asked you to reject most of the police station upgrades. Sure, expand the dispatch room, you know, it's $20,000, but the chief's, the chief's health and safety justifications just don't show up in the memo. There's nothing about mold, HVAC, or cell blocks in there. The rest of the project seems irrelevant to other pressing needs when we're likely to run over on existing project commitments. On a separate note, the chief and others have accused us of wishing harm on city employees. The real issue is who is suffering and what do they need? We've been forced into a negative position of rejecting upgrades because no one started with those questions. The real emergency is addiction and spiking overdose deaths. People who have no housing and are struggling to get by. Some of our neighbors are living really rough right now. All the police do is send the community resource officer, who drops in for a well check and then issues citations to folks. Is that how you take care of people and build trust? Now the GPD is getting a ride-along, just one more social worker who's embedded in law enforcement and systems of control. They talk a big game, but the police just don't get it. Where is the compassionate response? Folks are already traumatized by the cops. So I'm sorry, but I think it's callous to accuse us of wishing harm on people without talking about who's harmed already. So like the folks from Wildflower Alliance and Recover Project said last year, the community needs, quote, "community-led mental health, addiction, harm reduction, and crisis support" that are decoupled from law enforcement, coercive involuntary treatment, and punitive measures. They also said, quote, "We have a wealth of skills, structures, and people already in place doing this work. We just need the resources and autonomy to bring them to scale." This is exactly what we have heard from Brattleboro, Northampton, and Amherst. Greenfield is not exceptional. We have talked to hundreds of people across town who would prefer civilian programs, but many folks have said they can't speak up because they'll lose their job or suffer retaliation. These programs are so cheap compared to the police, and they work much better. The estimated startup costs for a peer-based crisis response is about $150,000. As far as capital expenses, they need a van and some office space. Somebody tell me how a million-dollar parking lot is a better use of our tax money. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Um, Natasha Pika, I am so sorry.
It's, it's all right. It's quite all right. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, it's Natasha Pika. Um, I live on Bird Street here in Greenfield. I also work in Greenfield. Uh, I love living here. I love the small-town community feel. I know all of my neighbors, and we help each other out. I love my community. I believe in community, and I believe in funding that is invested in our community. I do not believe that increasing policing or police funds is strengthening our community. I'm urging you to vote against this capital expenditure for the GPD renovations. These renos are expensive, and they're a bad investment. If we're truly invested in the health and safety of our community, we need creative, progressive, and innovative solutions. Not more of the same. Not more policing. The new list of estimates were submitted only a few days ago, by the way. So I agree with Molly. This has been a completely opaque process that has given members of the public virtually no time to consider it. Three days is not enough for busy people, working-class people that have families and have children, and they want to participate in this process. It is not enough time. The chief has talked about accreditation. Accreditation is not mandatory, and it does not equal accountability. Very few departments are even accredited in Massachusetts. Lastly, none of this is personal, as others have said before me. It is not about individual police officers or the chief. It is about policing, and policing is not the answer to the needs of our community. Policing is not the right tool. It is a blunt tool, and we need a nuanced tool. We need nuanced tools to mitigate and solve our complex issues. We need to ask ourselves, who is suffering in Greenfield and what are their needs? Their mental health needs, substance abuse support needs, affordable housing needs. Their needs are not over a million dollars in a state-of-the-art garage, parking lot, eight-foot fence, and a new cell block. We cannot arrest and jail our way out of these struggles. So again, I urge you, please, vote against this capital expenditure to GPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana Let- Ritchie?
Hi. Um, in arguing for the necessity of these upgrades, the chief has strongly emphasized that accreditation is one of the main issues. He's linked accreditation with accountability, and he also seems to think that accountability is what people are asking for when they protest against funding the police. And finally, as Natasha just referred to, he seems to take all this pushback very personally, as though he's being directly criticized. And I just really want to clarify one more time the perspective of many of us that are doing the pushing back. First, like Natasha just said, accreditation does not equal accountability. Many accredited police departments nonetheless continue to have rampant misconduct issues that go totally unaddressed. For example, in Springfield and Northampton. When we push back against police budgets and ask for alternatives to policing, we are not asking for more trainings and certificates for our existing police or for new parking lots and garages. We are asking for something that the police are literally not able to provide by definition. This brings me to my other larger point. I do understand why the chief feels aggrieved, but again, none of the pushback is personal at all. This is about wanting to spend our money on totally different things. What we want is a world in which policing itself is no longer necessary because all of the inequality and suffering that leads to crime or other antisocial behavior has actually been resolved. For example, we want to take money we currently spend on policing homeless people and instead spend it on eradicating homelessness. This is about transforming our conception of what a community can and should look like, what our responsibilities to one another are, what people need to actually be able to live in health and safety. Our current system only provides certain, very limited tools for managing conflict and social problems. Essentially, the police can punish or they can threaten to punish. When we push back against this fund, funding this punitive model, we're asking for a different approach altogether. We should not pay people with guns to scare and punish our struggling neighbors. We should instead spend money to try to fix the causes of that struggling. This vision may seem fanciful, and yet there are concrete steps we can start taking toward it right now. Indeed, other cities across the country are already doing so. In Amherst and in Northampton, the city councils have already committed funds to support alternative programs. Greenfield is lagging behind in this regard, which I think should give you all pause. It's time to stop funneling millions of dollars to the same practices that aren't working and start looking to real alternatives. Please begin by voting no on this police station upgrade request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dee Laterno, would you like to speak?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Rachel Gordon?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, hi, Rachel Gordon. I live on Eastern Ave in Precinct Two. Uh, thank you for taking my comment, and thank you for all the work that you all do. I'm sorry, you're probably going to have another long night tonight. Uh, I'm here to comment on two issues. First is the proposed police station upgrades, and I really agree with and support everything that all of the previous speakers have said. I appreciate that this is a, a complex issue, um, and I think we can all agree that no one should have to work in, in actually unsafe conditions. But unfortunately, the budget that the chief just presented doesn't seem to distinguish between needs and wants, as others have said, and it still doesn't offer much in the way of transparency or detail in any way that the public might have had time to understand. And yet, he's asking for a very large amount of money, which is pretty clearly only going to get even larger from here. Um, and it's one thing, you know, to ask for money to fix urgent health and safety issues. It's another thing to claim that, to claim that all of these upgrades are urgent, which they clearly are not. And frankly, I don't believe our taxpayer dollars should go toward investing more in policing. Um, so I ask you to vote against this proposed capital expenditure, and I also want to voice my support for the Greenfield People's Budget effort and a chance for the community to identify our needs and priorities and to directly shape spending through an inclusive process. The second issue I'd like to comment on is the property assessment process. Like many people, I was really shocked last month to learn about the disparities and discrepancies in the ways that certain properties are assessed or not assessed in Greenfield. Uh, I'm really grateful to those who commented for shining a light on what seems like very shady practices in our assessor's office, and I hope that this council will keep working on this issue and make sure that everyone in town is being assessed fairly. Um, it's pretty mind-blowing to me that while we've been having all of these debates and hand-wringing for years now about whether we can afford a new library, whether we can afford a new public safety complex, and all of the other investments that we need in Greenfield, you know, certain property owners with the right connections have been not contributing anywhere close to their fair share. Um, so it's no wonder that we can't afford the things we need. And it's also no wonder that the people who are least able to afford their property taxes are feeling unduly burdened because it turns out that they are unfairly burdened. Uh, so I really hope that all of you were as appalled as I was by this, um, and that you will do what you can to put a stop to it, starting with not renewing, um, the contract with the external assessment firm, because I think until we have answers, taxpayer money should not be going to pay a firm that, at the very least, doesn't seem to be doing its job very well, um, and at most, may be complicit in some pretty extreme corruption that is costing Greenfield hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, so, uh, I hope that you all consider the questions that have been raised. I think that the community deserves answers, and in the meantime, um, I imagine this can't be the only assessment firm out there, and we should hire one that's trustworthy. So I hope that you will act and vote accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I just want to do a reminder for people that when you put your name in the chat, it's just your name and address, and if you want to be in the public comment or the public hearing, do not ask any questions or anything else in the chat. Not everyone can see it if they're on phone, so it would be in a legal meeting. Thank you. Next up, Joey Regary?
Hi, Joseph Regary, 643 Bernison Road, Greenfield. Uh, speaking tonight on behalf of two issues. I do think it's logical for the police department to do what they have to do to make their building right. I agree with what everybody said, but we've got to keep our structure sound in this community. Uh, my second major point is, based on the Board of Assessors, I am an elected official representing the community's interests in the Board of Assessors. Uh, we received a proposed budget cut of $107,000 for these RRG. Um, I believe that the proposed budget of 208 is the cost of doing business. Um, our FY '21 budget was 193,894. Our FY '20 budget was 181,588. Fiscal year '22 is a revaluation year, and thus there are requirements that the Department of Revenue puts on us that we have to accomplish, and RRG is critical in that. I also think the office makeup with our chief assessor, Kimberly Mu, and the, um, administrative clerk work really well together, but RRG is really, they bring all of the specialties that this city department needs to do well, like a commercial, uh, industrial appraiser when needed, a personal property expert. Uh, recently, M.J. Adams had a TIF meeting, and somebody from RRG was there giving comments as to other TIFs that are utilized throughout the state. This is crucial for us. Uh, I also believe that RRG comes to us with an unbiased opinion. Uh, they are fair and consistent. Uh, this has been my opinion in the last few years, and I've been on the board for up to almost 10 years. Um, lastly, I just want to finish by saying that there are 6,748 parcels and personal property items that the Board of the Assessor's Office has to evaluate. I think you could always find 10, 20, 30 that are a little off, but I believe, uh, the makeup of the current Board of Assessors is, uh, you know, accomplishes our goal. I encourage the council to approve the proposed budget of 208,849. Thank you.
Thank you. I am so sorry, Andrew Ritchie. I'm so sorry. Um, you have the floor.
That's okay, Counselor. That's okay. Um, thank you for, um, coming back to me. My name's Andrew Ritchie, Beach Street, Greenfield. I want to say, because Joseph Regary just spoke, that I too am totally scandalized by what we've learned about assessment. Um, and I, I think that it's, um, absolutely shocking, in fact, the, the degree to which the former mayor manipulated this system in concert with, you know, the, the assessors. But what I'm really here to talk about is this 1.35 million capital request for the police station renovations, which I too am urging you all to vote down. Um, there's been an alarming lack of transparency and consistency throughout this capital request process. The Capital Improvements Programming Committee, Planning Committee, and the mayor should have asked Chief Hague to submit an itemized request with estimates for these expenses that he mentioned in his memo back in November when the request was first considered. The chief has shown that he's both willing and able to provide those numbers, but we're only getting them two days before this meeting, and, and, you know, most of the public hasn't seen them at all, and that's only after public pressure. Um, now that we do have a memo that has, um, some estimates, uh, we can actually look at it, and we can see, um, that the chief has not been forthright in his claims about occupational health issues in the building. In discussions with councilors and in previous meetings, he's emphasized air quality issues, including the need for mold remediation and ventilation. Um, yet in this, um, in this, uh, memo that he submitted, um, the only, the only, um, area that we can really point to, the only expense we can really point to, is putting windows in the dispatch room. Most of this budget is a million dollars for a new, uh, purpose-built garage, repaving the parking lot, and demolishing and rebuilding a new parking structure. We can all agree that city employees, no matter what department they're in, deserve to work in a safe and secure environment, but nothing about this current request suggests that that's a priority. Meanwhile, we have several other city buildings that are badly in need of repair. School buildings, the Sanderson Street complex, and the town hall, which has significant accessibility issues. I ask you to consider, how should the employees working in those buildings feel when they see the bulk of this capital request going towards a new parking lot and parking structure? towards a new parking lot and parking structure at the police station while their concerns remain unaddressed? The other thing I want to emphasize here is that this request has been mishandled by the chief and the mayor and the Capital Improvements Committee at a time of intense public scrutiny of police departments, as we've heard in other comments tonight. Our neighbors in Northampton, Amherst, and Brattleboro are having serious discussions about dramatically changing their approach to public safety. Just a few days ago, Northampton released its budget with $424,000 for a new Department of Community Care staffed by non-police crisis responders. The fact that the chief, the mayor, and other people who looked at this request thought it unnecessary to dot every i and cross every t for this proposal demonstrates a woeful disconnect with their constituents. Last summer, hundreds of Greenfield residents marched to this very police station to issue a number of demands which still have yet to be taken seriously by the mayor or the chief. As anyone can see from looking at poll numbers, Greenfield is a progressive town, and it would be naive to think that residents will be happy with business-as-usual policing in the years to come. Changes are coming, and our capital expenditures should reflect and embrace that progressive mindset. So I encourage you again to please vote down this request, and I thank you for your consideration and your service to the city.
Okay, thank you, Andrew, and I apologize once more. Okay, Sophia Pastore?
Sophia, you should check your mic. We can't hear you. Sophia, are you logged in? Can you hear us?
Okay, Sophia, maybe you're having some problems. So I'm going to go to the next person, and I will try to circle back. Okay, Pamela Goodwin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Who is this? Is this Pamela or?
It's Pamela. I just had to pull over on the pike. It's Pamela.
Okay, Pamela. Okay, your address, and then you may go.
Yes. My address is 54 High Street, and I have two comments. And before I start, I do want to thank everyone who serves the city. I used to, I was born in Greenfield a long time ago, and it was a town. And I too love living in Greenfield, because I have moved back for almost two years now. So my comment has to do, and I've talked to several people on the city council, as an elderly person, I'm upset that we have not had a senior center for almost 14 months. First, it was an emergency area that we needed. Then, we were open eventually for one crochet and knitting group. That was it. Then that was shut down. And then, when the hospital is giving COVID vaccines, all of a sudden, the ZOM Center is issuing vaccines. So when I recently made a phone call, I spoke with a wonderful woman named Kathy Dunn, and I said, you know, we are desperate to get in there and do chair exercises and any other activities that you would like to offer us. And Kathy's definitely on the same page, and she said, by the time we get the equipment out of here from the vaccine clinic and do the deep cleaning, it's going to be June. And I said, I will get some people as volunteers to help come in and deep clean if you need extra assistance, because it's still a very long wait for the elderly people who would like to have that resume as a senior center. I realize it's a community center, but it's a long wait, and I'll leave it with that. My second comment is, I was referred by the Board of Health to call the mayor's office on an issue, and it was a very unpleasant phone call that I had with a person. I was told that I don't understand what a deadly virus is, and I said, well, my daughter caught it, and she works in a big hospital, and she survived. It was, I could not believe where it went. I was like, that's not why I called. I was told by the Board of Health that each agency and each building is going to make their own decision about when they were going to reopen. Finally, the library reopened. They don't have a newspaper. The last time I was there, they've only got a couple of computers that anybody could use. I think they have Chromebooks outside. The weather's nice. The town hall finally opened up without an appointment, and my point is that an elderly person who has no internet, only has two places in the entire city, and one would be the senior center, that's all gone, and the other would be the library. And I don't think, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous, and I'm not happy about it. The second comment was, I have spent a lot of hours working on Housing is a Human Right. I love that group of people. We're go-getters. We are going to make this happen about housing people, homeless. We're changing the zoning. I was going to apply for the ad hoc committee. I am still waiting for a call back from the mayor's office, because I would like to know if there has been people appointed to the ad hoc committee for the zoning. And I don't know when they plan to call me. I said to someone else who I think is pretty well-connected in town, and, you know, I think you have to be politically connected somehow. Oh, I'm sorry, that's my time is up. Anyway, I am upset about not reaching people at the mayor's office and getting my answers, and I'm upset about the senior center. Thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you, Pamela. Okay, I'm going to circle back to Sophia Pastore. Are you here?
Hi, my name's Ella Condon. I live on Beach Street in Precinct 8. I'm also here to voice my, I'm urging councillors to reject the 1.35 million dollars to the police station upgrades, and I appreciate all the comments that have already been made about it, especially Andrew's. You know, it was just under a year ago that we had hundreds of people marching, and we had people talking about their experiences with Greenfield PD. We've had people, multiple people, who have said that they don't feel safe visiting Greenfield because of the PD, and they urge for some sort of accountability and some sort of reduction in policing. And the mayor and chief both said that they would try to work on that, but yet there hasn't really been anything. Instead, we've seen Greenfield PD expand. They've hired more officers, and now they're asking for $5 million over three years for a station that, who knows how long that they'll still be in. And then not only that, but as Andrew said, we have Brattleboro, Northampton, East Hampton, Amherst. I know South Hadley is also working on trying to find alternatives to policing, and I think Greenfield would do wonderful to have an alternative to policing. We already see our jail is starting to have alternatives to how they try and react to people who come into their jail. And I just really, really urge council members to rethink what this money would do for Greenfield and how it would look if this money went somewhere else that would actually go into health, community wellness, instead of more policing and more criminalizing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Lavin?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Mark Lavin. I live on Princeton Terrace. I work at Greenfield Dispatch. I've been there since 2007, full-time. It is a small room. We do shifts of eight hours, 12 hours, and 16 hours, where we are sitting in a chair at a desk that has about 10 computers, 10 monitors. So to even just get up and walk around, that is a small room. To leave the room, if there's a car accident, everybody now has a cell phone. We're going to get five to six calls on that one accident, and now you're talking to one person answering the phone, because the other one's out stretching her legs. We do need for the wall to come down, give us a little bit more room. We don't have windows that go to outside. We are inside office, and our air quality is what we have in the room. We don't have fresh air coming from outside. So yeah, we are in what people are now calling a closet. And I mean, I've been there since 2007, so not much has changed, except we get more and more equipment in there, and the room keeps getting smaller with all the equipment. So yes, we do need the upgrades for dispatch, and I'd just like to voice my opinion on that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mark. Jamie Winell?
Hi there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for this meeting, and my name is Jamie Winell, and I live on Highland Avenue in Greenfield. I'd like to speak tonight as an educator. I have the privilege and honor of working with 11, 12, and 13-year-olds in this wonderful town. This is a town that means a lot to me. I've lived here for almost two years now. This is my first year working at Greenfield Middle School, and I care a lot about the kids, and I would not be there without the kids there. The kids are having a hard time. They are struggling, and it is natural and expected that young people experiment with substances. Substances are advertised heavily. Substances are widely prevalent. And I ask you, bottom of my heart, is it going to make a bigger difference for these children to have more services in the town for wraparound care, for mental health, for support groups, support for their families, access to housing, and a living wage for all people? Or is a police parking station going to help these children? I honestly, I'm shaking right now. These children mean so much to me, and they are on the precipice of adulthood. They are the future of our entire city, our entire nation, and our entire planet. And what we are teaching them about wants versus needs is critical. We need to think about preventative measures. People have spoken about providing housing to unhoused people is more cost-effective than routinely policing them. And I'm sorry, but you talk about air quality. Air quality is terrible for incarcerated people. So increasing policing and increasing the surveillance and increasing police presence without community support is going to mean that more of my students are possibly going to sit in jail where the air quality sucks. So with all due respect in my heart, I ask you to think about preventative measures. I'm looking at five years down the line. My students aren't able to vote for a long time, and so I'm here speaking for them and speaking for a committee where I believe that we can push the envelope and we can be an alternative example of what we do want. Of course, I would say, in condition for police people, I also, although we don't need as much, and we are able to take care of each other in preventative ways. Thank you for your time. I urge council members to vote no against both of these. Also, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Lucy Khan?
Good evening to everyone on the council and all of my neighbors who are tuning in and have already spoken with so much passion, vision, and research about the reasons to reject the 1.3 million police budget that is in this, that is up for discussion tonight. I am also speaking in support of rejecting the budget. And I'm speaking from the perspective of a small business owner who is needed to make decisions about capital improvements that are large numbers. I know that building innovations and, you know, working with architects having estimates that, you know, do sometimes go up in the course of the project can happen. And I, you know, I know that that's, that capital improvements and buildings are reasons why...
Lucy, can you still hear us?
Can you hear? You scared me.
Lucy, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Your audio went out.
Can you hear me?
There you go. We can hear you now. Now we cannot. It's a little game we play called virtual meetings and public comment. You're cutting in and out, Lucy. I'm very sorry. I still can't hear President Ricketts.
Okay, Lucy, I'm going to move on, okay? I'm sorry, we cannot hear you. All right, so the next would be Brah Moranis?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Oh, and Kathy, you'll be after him. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I teach in Springfield, in a really bad place where a whole lot of people deal with really bad things. And so this whole idea of wanting to upgrade where you work is to be not a cinder block jail of itself is, you know, dear to my heart, too. I can't imagine how the councillors are going to handle these questions, because they are so broad. You know, how should our community use budgetary allocations to value different approaches to taking care of the public good? Right? This is a huge question, and certainly, you know, the other level of, well, you know, did Chief Hague, you know, dot his i's and cross his t's on his budget allocation? There's like, they're miles and miles apart. I wanted to just present, in light of everybody who has been objecting to the budget allocation has been saying, in light of their comment that we have a strong movement, the growing movement, to consider alternatives to policing for some community need, that if there could be just some set aside, I don't know how much it would have to be, to be significant. I imagine that $10,000 would not be significant, and $100,000 would probably be more than anyone would tolerate, to just have the people who are doing this proposal, the People's Budget and the other folks, come up with a proposal and develop it with community, you know, sure, that's community meetings with people to say, you know, what are the things that the police do well? What are the things the police are not necessarily the right people to do well? And fund that. Fund that exploration, because then you're basically blessing that there be that exploration. You're going on record and saying, we want to see if there are alternatives to policing for certain kinds of community support needs. You get a plus for that, and I'm sure that, you know, $50,000 could be found out of Chief Hague's proposed budget to do something like that. I just think it'd be a win for everybody, and I think that all the people who are trying to explore these other avenues could then present you with something in enough time that when the next budget cycle comes around, you can consider it in context. Thank you.
Thank you, Brah. Catherine Golub?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Catherine Golub, Glenbrook Drive. I live in Precinct 1. First of all, councillors, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight and for all of your hard work. I'm here to ask you to vote against most of the capital expenditure for the police and to vote for equitable tax assessment, and I'll keep it short, because I spoke last time and because so many of my neighbors spoke in my mind. And I want to make clear that this issue of funding the police department is not at all personal. I've been personally grateful, as I'm sure many people have, for my interactions with Chief Hague, but this is an issue of financial priorities and of equity. And I would support $20,000 for dispatch, but I would not support the rest of the proposal, and I urge you to vote against it. Liz Gilman shared tonight that 69% of funding for our town comes from property taxes, and it makes no sense to ask Greenfield taxpayers to foot the bill for yet another major project that could total above $5 million when clear inconsistencies exist in Greenfield tax assessing. And it appears, given the comments from last month, that the tax base is being artificially lowered by improper assessment. So rather than... So rather than asking taxpayers to pay more for the police station, we should first take steps to tax property owners accurately and equitably. And so I urge you tonight to use your power as councilors to push for equitable taxation by finding a tax assessing firm that will do an accurate job, and to vote against the capital expenditure for the police until we have a democratic budgeting process in which we can discern as a community what the community truly wants, and whether they want to be investing multiple millions of dollars in policing, to have that process before we start throwing good money after bad. Thank you, councilors, for your time and for all of your hard work.
Thank you so much. So Counselor Mayo, if you could just either copy and paste and send that comment to the full council, or whoever sent that comment, to Counselor Mayo, if you could please send it to the city clerk, then we will all get that. Okay?
And do.
President Ricketts? President Ricketts, could we ask him to please send it to the council office, and we will disperse it?
Thank you.
And do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for saving me from reading it.
Yep. Okay, Rebecca Seyfried. Rebecca?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Am I the last person to make public comment?
No, one more after you.
Okay. My name's Rebecca Seyfried. I am at 79 Maple Street, so that's Precinct Six in Greenfield. I'm sorry that I couldn't join until now, and I'm glad that I could. I just wanted to also urge the councilors to vote against the line in the budget that has to do with updating and renovating the police department building. I think that there simply hasn't been enough time for the public to consider the updated budget that the chief submitted, and I think we all deserve some more time to consider that. I also have concerns about the priorities of the department. I think that it's very important that we, as a community, prioritize the work environment of the employees who work for the city, and that those line items certainly need to be considered. But other things that have to do with aesthetics and beautifying the parking lot are not the best way to spend that money. I think that as a community, we need to prioritize public housing for our houseless community members, and many other ways we could spend that money on infrastructure to support the community residents. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Sierra Valente Blau?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I want to talk here to all of you, the chief.
Your name and address.
Your job.
Your address.
Thank you. Sienna Valente Blau, 49, Forget Road, and I live in Holly, and I work and spend time in Greenfield and consider part of the community myself. I want to address you guys, the councilors and the chief. I want to tell you, your job is not easy. A chief's job is not easy, and so I really appreciate you taking the time to listen and hear from us. Progress isn't easy, and serving your community isn't easy. And figuring out what's best for our community and moving forward when things are changing, especially when people disagree, is hard. And I want you to know also that our jobs as citizens are not easy. And we are not the people in positions of power here, and so it is our responsibility to take part in this democratic process and to speak up so that our views are heard and then hopefully expressed and carried out by you all. That's, you know, our job is to communicate, and your job is to hear us and do what you think's best. I've heard that dispatch, I'm here to talk about the Greenfield Police Department budget. I hear that dispatch is listed as the most important thing. I hear that. That is so important. Our community relies on this for safety. I've heard that the department has space, then we heard that, no, that wasn't part of the original plan for that building. I find it hard to believe that a $16 million building doesn't have room for dispatch that is better than the small cupboard or closet that has been described that doesn't have any windows. And I also, you know, if we need to put that in and put in funding for that, I totally understand putting in lighting, getting those folks more space, that is important. I think there are ways to do that without spending 1.35 or 1.7 requested million dollars. Second priority I heard from the chief is that fixing the doors is what needs to happen now. On those eight lines that were sent out in the capital budget estimates, I didn't see fixing the doors listed as any of them in the Phase One Plan, so I'm a little confused about that, even though that was written just a couple days ago. And also, when the Greenfield Police Department was granted accreditation, their building was grandfathered in, and from my understanding, while being given warnings, the state of the building will not affect our accreditation status. And therefore, those request items have a little bit more time for us to figure out what we want in our community for policing, or lack thereof. We're talking about investing $5 million over the next three years in the status quo of policing. And I may point out that the building we're talking about renovating is valued at only $820,000. A $5 million increase is a little off. This seems like an irresponsible decision, and frankly, an ignorant decision. And when I say ignorant, unknowing, but also ignoring the voices of the people here in community that are showing up and expressing that we want something different, but also the hundreds of millions of people that have stood up across the United States and in this community, begging for alternatives to policing, to support and save lives of our community, begging for something other than the policing status quo, and giving something else a chance, investing in something else. Thank you for hearing me, and have a good night.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Okay. So we can move on to our public hearing. If there is anyone who wanted to speak during our public hearing that did not sign up, you could put your name and address in now. But Counselor Forgé, would you like to do the second reading in public hearing?
Counselor Forgé, you are on mute.
Everybody saw my lips going really fast, right? Okay, thank you. Public hearing. In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 19, 2021, at 5:30 PM via WebEx to receive public input on the following: Fiscal Year 2022 Mayor's Operating Budget. Appropriate $54,472,520 for the Fiscal Year 2022 General Budget. Appropriate $100,000 from Fund 8406, OPED Stabilization Fund, to reduce fiscal year 2022 tax rate. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $540,950. Appropriate $1,403,465 for Fiscal Year 2022 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,247,635 for Fiscal Year 2022 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $1,771,602 for Fiscal Year 2022 GSET Enterprise Fund. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, May 19, 2021, at 5:30 PM via WebEx. Materials can be obtained from the City Quirks Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Penny Ricketts, Greenfield City Council President.
Okay, thank you. So that's open. You said at 7:30, and I don't see anyone that's willing to speak, and I think someone's written in the chat box again, but we're fine there. Okay, so let's get started. All right, you want to start?
President Ricketts?
Oh, yes.
She needs, Counselor Forgé needs to read the second reading, and then at the conclusion of that, you could close the public hearing if that's your wish.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. City Council's second reading, May 19, 2021. The Fiscal Year 2022 Mayor's Operating Budget, this is the second reading. Appropriate $54,472,520 for Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund Budget. Appropriate $100,000 from Fund 8406, OPED Stabilization Fund, to reduce fiscal year 2022 tax rate. Establish spending limits on revolving funds not to exceed $540,950. Appropriate $1,403,465 for Fiscal Year 2022 Water Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $2,247,635 for Fiscal Year 2022 Sewer Enterprise Fund. Appropriate $1,771,602 for Fiscal Year 2022 GSET Enterprise Fund.
Yes, could Counselor Forgé just read that total dollar amount on the top into the record? With the stumble, I just don't want it to be an illegible number in the full reading. So just that top number again, because it kind of got out of sorts in the second reading.
Okay, no problem, but the top number, you are asking about the Mayor's Operating Budget, 54 million?
Yes.
Is that correct? Thank you. Appropriate $54,472,520 for Fiscal Year 2022 General Fund Budget.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:35. So motions, orders, and resolutions. The Mayor's Capital Budget. Page 21. I got it. Okay, this would be, let's see, this is to take from the table. Okay.
Order number Fiscal Year 21097. City of Greenfield, Massachusetts, the City Council moved that if the order that the Greenfield City Council take from the table. Order number Fiscal Year 21-077. The sum of $1,350,000 be appropriated for the police station update and reconfiguration, and to meet said appropriation, transfer $100,000 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization, and the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $1,250,000 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling statute. The mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept and expend any federal and/or state grants available for this project to be used to reduce the within appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and proposed purpose of this project, which was tabled at the April 21, 2021 council meeting. Majority vote required.
Seconded, Gwen.
Okay, so it's been seconded by Counselor Gwen. Could I please have the recommendation from Ways and Means?
President Ricketts?
It's cabled. Never mind.
This is just to take it from the table.
Right. Yeah. Okay, so could I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwen?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Herschel? Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray?
Counselor Stumpel Ray? Yes.
Thank you. Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion is taken from the table. It is now on the table for council consideration. It's on the floor, I'm so sorry.
Okay, so Counselor Forgé, would you like to?
Yes, hang on just a second, please.
Hold on one moment. Counselor Elmer, did you?
Counselor Gwen is ahead of me.
No, I thought Counselor Gwen, that was to change the figure. Are you on it again, Counselor Gwen?
I want to acknowledge the thought that went into the comments from the public. Can you hear me?
Point of order? Point of order? I'm sorry to interrupt, Counselor Elmer. My question is, don't we have to read the motion before we have any discussion?
You do not.
You do not?
You do not.
Okay. I'm very sorry, Counselor Elmer.
May I continue?
Yes, you may.
But I think it's important to distinguish between capital improvement and the direction of policing nationwide. As others have said, this is a city building. The maintenance was withdrawn for nearly a decade because the previous mayor thought that the police were going to move out of that building. It's been allowed to deteriorate somewhat, and some of the money here is for improvements in the infrastructure. I was dismayed that when we, I was glad that we got detail back, and that's what we asked for, and the chief delivered. I was dismayed that the number went up. I'm not in favor of voting for the 1.7 million. I'm reluctantly willing to vote for the 1.35. It's not, I don't think it's our job to tell the police department how to make up the difference. That's his job. That's all I have to say.
Okay, does any, okay, Counselor Stumpel Ray? And then Counselor Dolan?
I too, I know it takes a lot of, I would say, you know, it takes a lot to come before a city council and speak, and so I do want to thank everyone for making an effort to come out tonight and for the past meetings on this issue. I myself work for an organization, my, what pays my bills, I work for a national organization whose mission it is to close the opportunity divide defined by advantageous employment that can transcend families into places of well-being and financial security. And I actually work for an organization that is white minority, and we're actively working to battle white supremacy culture every day. And so everything that everyone said here tonight is something that I'm very familiar with, and I have to go through my colleague who just spoke and said, we do have to differentiate here between capital expenditure and a national cry for change. It's not an easy task to do, but I'm elected, and you put your faith in me to make decisions that are hard and to consider just that. And so, you know, being an elected person, it's my job to do more... And so, you know, being an elected person, it's my job to do more research and to understand the facts. And so some things that I heard, we do have a regional opioid task force here in Franklin County that is nationally recognized and is one of the best in the country. We do, the PD has not grown. I heard a comment saying that we're hiring new officers. It has not grown, we're backfilling positions for retirements. We're not growing our police department right now. And I would say that the chief, by backfilling the police department, is making an effort to make sure that we can have more diverse representation on our police department. And I keep hearing, I'm really disappointed, and I keep hearing a narrative about we have a crisis counselor, and it's almost like no change or small incremental change isn't enough. And it frustrates the hell out of me because you have no idea how much effort went behind having one crisis counselor brought onto the police department. And we're one of the first police departments in the country to do that. And so when I hear folks who are fighting the good fight. When I hear folks who are fighting the good fight, coming to these meetings, not realizing that incremental change is pivotal to having overall change, it's frustrating to me. And we can't, and just to set the record straight, we can't borrow. This isn't borrowing, capital expenditures are borrowing. This isn't money sitting around from taxpayers' revenue. We can't borrow for public housing. It's just not fundamentally how the government works. So I hear you, I hear your frustration, and I appreciate your energy towards this issue, but it has to be done in a different way. So that being said, I do see the want, the difference between wants and needs. And I don't agree with spending $5 million over X amount of years into a building that's not worth it. So I'm looking at this from a real estate perspective. And so I'm willing to look at the list, support the need of making sure that our buildings are upgraded and where they need to be. Because we keep this narrative going, we're like, oh, the cost of materials is going to rise, the cost of materials is going to rise. Well, guess what, it has. And we don't know when it's going to go back down. So I will, I will support this, but let's, I want to work with my colleagues a little bit to see which direction we want to go for, for how much of the of the dollars that we're willing to fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stempel Ray. Counselor Dolan, I believe you're next.
Thank you. And to, I have a lot to say, but to Counselor Elmer's point, I'm going to limit it just to the the process issues that I see.
Okay.
Um, I've been pretty disappointed with the way this issue has been handled from the beginning. And I want to say in particular, I was disappointed with the chief's performance at the last meeting and in some subsequent correspondence that I had with him since then. I saw a lot of anger and a lot of defensiveness. And at least one thing that sounded like a threat when he said, talked about the number of lawsuits we were going to have if we didn't pass this and if we didn't pass accreditation. Um, I'd like to say that I think it's the department is committed to transparency, as they say they are. Handling difficult questions with grace, handling skepticism and even dissent with grace is a big part of that. That's really important to me. And this comes back to a theme for me of entitlement. I feel a lot of entitlement around this conversation from the public safety folks. The city is absolutely responsible for keeping its employees safe. But we don't owe anybody a public safety complex. Incidentally, the only reason that we didn't fund a public safety complex was because the deal that was put before us made no sense at all and was a terrible deal for the city and was voted down. It's not that we didn't want to fund a public safety complex. It's that the deal that was in front of us didn't make sense. So the city doesn't owe this to people. It's the chief's job as the department head to make a case that this project is a priority among a thousand other priorities in the city. And that case just has not been made for me. We got less than a paragraph of justification for a $5 million project. I asked a bunch of questions before the last meeting. Five weeks later, I had not received a response. I finally did get a response, and I was told that it's my responsibility to familiarize myself with the police accreditation standards. And that's just not how any of this works. If you're serious about this project, you really have to be ready to cite the chapter and the verse of those standards and show exactly how this project is going to rectify those. I am a state employee, I do this all the time. Sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. But this whole concept of give us money and then we'll make a plan is not acceptable to me. It's not fiscally responsible. We did finally get a list, a list for the project, 48 hours before the meeting, that was wildly different from what we had received before and much higher. And in that list, I don't see any safety issues. A lot of hay was made during this conversation about the safety issues. But we hear tonight that there are two categories. There's quality of life and there's accreditation. Where did the safety issues go? So initially, I was open to some sort of compromise when this came up last week. I do think the dispatch is a priority, and I would be willing to fund that. But I'm not open to that compromise anymore. I want a building to work, I want the employees to have comfortable spaces, but this proposal is so profoundly flawed that it's unsalvageable. So I would encourage the mayor and the chief to go back, do their homework. This is my library binder, it's two and a half inches thick and several hundred pages. I'm not asking for that, but I am asking for more than a paragraph. And come back to us with specifics and documentation on a proposal that we can support. So I will be voting no on this, basically regardless of the compromise that's proposed.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dolan. So before we continue on, I just want to say that I know councils only get five minutes. But I'm trying to be a little lenient tonight because it is a lot of money and because I don't know if we're going to work out a compromise. So I just want to say that I'm not going to put us on a timer because I'm hoping we're going to do some really good, fantastic work with each other. But please just be mindful of that and just try to watch yourself so that I don't regret this and I put the five minutes back on, okay? Counselor Mayo? And then Counselor Disorga, and then Counselor Gwen. So Counselor Mayo, you up for?
Hi, I was, you know, I do my counting on pads about the comments that we heard from the 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 public. And there was 19 people who spoke not in favor of of the upgrades for the police department. And some of them were, they spoke about that we should be spending the money on very specific things like alternative policing and homelessness. And, you know, we've heard that before, and we can, and we all know we can do better if we put our minds to it and the and the state gives us a better cherry sheet. But I'm, it dismays me when I hear the veracity in the people's voices about their experiences and about what is missing. And and that doesn't even mention the fact that the inequities of of the assessments that people are really upset about and that that factors into their their mindset about what is being said about tonight, I believe. And, or at least to a certain extent. So I agree with what is, what has been said by Counselor Dolan. And that it, some of it just does not add up to me and doesn't equal a must-have item. It falls way short of 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 that. And for that reason, and many reasons more, I can't see myself voting yes for this. So I'm going to be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Disorga, and then Counselor Gwen.
I toured the building with the chief and saw the things that he pointed out. And thank you for the time that you spent with me. I spoke with someone from the Mass Office on Disability and an architect. The architect, who was familiar with the building, thought that it was inwise, unwise to invest large sums of money into this building given its problematic design and location. The building is valued at $817,000. Since spending $245,000 on anything within the building, we necessitate bringing the entire inside of the building up to fully ADA standards. I'm not going to support anything that's on the inside. That would not include the fence, but may or may not include the Sally Port. $146,000 has been spent thus far in the building since 2019. That included new roof, electrical, and rooftop units. And none of that would go towards the 30%. I would support plans and the fence because that is on the outside. I could see the necessity of the Sally Port, but until we got an architect in there, because two people suggested that that was part, that that actually could be considered part of the building, I'd have to be a no on that. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Counselor Gwen?
Sorry. I want to kind of reiterate some of the things that Counselor Elmer said and Counselor Stempel Ray said. There's a few things we've got to really keep in mind when we're doing this. This is a capital budget which deals in structure, which deals in not programs, not staffing, not those things, it's structure. We are obligated by charter to maintain our buildings that are owned by the municipality. We have to keep them in working order, we have to keep them safe, we have to keep them healthy, in in all of those ways, all buildings. And that's what the capital expenses comes down to. As was pointed out, we neglected that building for a period of time thinking that we were going to move out of there. That wasn't a good move either. Because who's to say what the next generation of that building will hold? We own that building. Will it someday be a new social service location? Will that social service location be, you know, a hub for low-income housing? That building belongs to us. So for that reason, we have to continue to keep it current and updated. And as Counselor Stempel Ray pointed out, we're borrowing this money. We cannot borrow this money under Chapter 44. We can't borrow this money to support things that aren't structure of nature. We can't introduce a program. We can't introduce a new schooling system with that money. It's not our money like the tax collection. In the end, we all pay for it because we have to pay back the borrowing. But we can't borrow this 100, 200, 1,250,000 because 100,000 is coming from somewhere else. We can't, we have to borrow it under the criteria for capital structural improvement. So we have to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. Like all bosses and managers, we hire managers so we can put faith that they'll make the right decision. I would hope that the chief would look at the stuff that some of the people have brought up today with regards to mold or water, and look at those and maybe prioritize those over some of the things that that have been spoken on. But it's, that money is allocated as a fund of borrowing, not necessarily for specific projects. I will vote in favor of this this evening because those improvements and others need to be made. We own this building, and we're borrowing the money for capital projects. So for that reason, I will be in favor of the request as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gilmore, and then Counselor Hirschfeld. And then Counselor Jarvis.
Thank you. So I want to point out, we had a lot of neighbors talking to us about their priorities and what they want to see happen in our community. They talked to us a bit about this last year, and they've talked to us about this since. Anytime money has come up that has, you know, funded the police department, and we've basically told them to go pound sand because of this, that, or the other reason. And I feel like now we're making excuses to do it again. So I understand that there's a difference between borrowing and using money out of free cash or, you know, or property tax assessments. I get that the mechanism is different, and right now, it is too late to change that mechanism. But at the beginning of the budgeting process, money is a lot more fungible. And I feel like where there is a will, there's a way. The fact that we're talking about this this year of all years, I feel, our neighbors feel like this is tone deaf, and I feel like I want to honor what they're saying to us because it sounds like the council is, again, going to talk down and say, you don't know what you're talking about, we know best. Regardless of whether or not they elected us, we're still beholden to them, even while we're in office, not just during election season. And I think that we could use more money for housing. I know we can't borrow for it, but I would hope that in next year's budget, we do see some programming money that could be used towards these community needs from other areas of our of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes, we really don't know what the future of our police department is going to look like in the next 10 or 15 years. And for us to try and upgrade this facility, which is in poor shape, I can see putting money into the dispatch, which is wholly, wholly inadequate. But I really can't see putting a lot of money into this building. I think it's throwing good money after bad. And I will vote against this. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis?
Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to hit on here. 20 years ago, the fire department had $1 million put into it for renovations. I can guarantee you the assessed value of the of the fire department was minuscule compared to the cost of renovation. So we can't, we can't say that we're not going to put this money into the building because it's only valued at at X amount of dollars. If we did that as a municipality, we would never fix any of our buildings. We would never upgrade any of our buildings. We would have never put any any money into Federal Street North and South and fix those. We would have never did Green River School. We would have never done any of those buildings because it made no dollars and cents value to put that kind of money into a building that wasn't assessed at that. I keep on hearing that we're going to put good money after bad money. If we don't do anything with this building, it is going to literally fall down around whomever is in that building. We need to act and do what we need to do. You drive by there now, there's cones around the catch basin that's falling in. Is this what I want to see if I'm, if I'm coming to the city of Greenfield and looking at their interstructure? If I'm going to move here, I stop at the police station, I stop at the fire department, I stop at the library, I stop at my schools. Those are the important, important parts to interstructure when you're, when you're choosing a town that you're moving into. And you look at the parking lot and it's falling apart? Then you, then you listen to the city council meeting, and all of a sudden you find out there's a bunch of problems with the building? I'd want to move to a city that that backs its interstructure and not have it fall down around them. I hear that we need to listen to what our, what our, what our, what the people that put us in our offices voted for us. There's 17,000, almost 18,000 people in Greenfield. We've heard from 19 people. To me, that is nowhere close to to the majority of the people telling us what to do. I understand, I understand wholeheartedly what the 19 people are saying. And there is, there is time for change and time to be more compassionate to our fellow humans. But but we're mixing, we're mixing apples and oranges on that subject. We need to stay focused. And the focus is keeping our building safe, secure, and 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 not neglect it. Because in 15 years, there's not going to be a building. So we're basically stepping over dollar bills to pick up quarters, which the city of Greenfield has done for a million years. And this is the path that we're going to be going on now. Let's stop jumping all those dollars to pick up quarters. Let's invest in the interstructure and do it now before, I can tell you, I work in construction, it's not going to get cheaper. The prices are not coming down. From everything I hear from the industry standards, they aren't. I can tell you that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to do Counselor Wheeler and then Counselor Forgie, and I'm going to circle back to Counselor Stempel Ray. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. So here's the message that I hope Mayor Wiedegartner and Chief Hague are hearing, and the one that I hope they understand. A lot of residents want Greenfield to reimagine the role of policing. That's what I want as a resident. That's what I support. Concretely speaking, I support studying the creation of a citizen review board at the charter level. I support forming a police review commission, similar to the one that North Hampton formed, with the potential to create a Department of Unarmed Emergency Response. I do recognize the efforts that are being made towards that already. And I support, like Counselor Dolan said, holding the police department to the same standards as every other department when it comes to budget requests. And as the former chair of the Capitol Committee, I apologize for not necessarily holding them to the same standards in the past. And I would encourage the future chair of the Capitol Committee to make sure that you do so. Lastly, I will just say that without meaningfully reimagining the future of policing, we will continue to have discussions like this one, where we talk around the issue without actually talking about the issue. Because I don't think this is a conversation about the issue that everyone cares about. This conversation is about, when it comes down to it, fixing a building. And I'm going to vote with that in mind. But I'm going to emphasize that I support the goals of everyone who spoke during public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. Counselor Forgie?
Thank you, Madam President. I really want to thank everybody who has spoken this evening in our public comment and also my fellow colleagues on council. To pick up on the thread from Counselor Wheeler, this issue tonight is a capital piece. It is about structure. It's about building. And this is the best that we can do with the circumstances that we are given at this point. We have to maintain the building and the structure. We have to provide safe places for people to work in. I also want to comment on a number of, Counselor Gilmore and Counselor Wheeler and myself were involved with Charter. As a result of Charter, there are recommendations that are coming forward about public safety and about the implementation of either civil review board. Counselor Renaud talked about, in an email to council today, about a civil rights officer. There are people, and I want to assure everybody who spoke this evening, there are people that are working very hard to bring about change. It's slow, but there are people that care and that are working hard to do this. I will be voting yes because it is about the structure. And I agree with everything that other counselors have said, Counselor Gwynn, Counselor Stempel Ray. It is about maintaining what we have. It's about providing a safe place for people to work in. If the building gets repurposed, we still need a solid building. Again, I want to thank everybody. There's been some thoughtful, very thoughtful comments out there tonight. Makes me think in different ways, and I appreciate that challenge. But I will be voting in favor of this appropriation.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray.
Counselor Wheeler covered my points.
Oh, did he? Okay. Counselor Bottomley.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said in the Ways and Means, that I feel like I could support plans because I don't see how we could go forward without those plans at the minimum. And it seems like the public wants to have time to discuss these issues in depth. And if we have architectural plans, it seems like that would solve a lot of our questions of picking and choosing. Because as it is, I feel like we don't know if this can be completed in two phases, three phases. It's all guesswork. And it sounds like a lot needs to be done. And we need somewhere to start. So that's where I'm at.
Okay, any other counselors' comments or questions? So Counselor Elmer.
This is a procedural question. If this is voted down, what happens to it? When can it be reintroduced?
I think if Liz is not out there to answer, I think it is nine months before the mayor can bring this back to council in this same iteration. If it looks different, then it can come back to a council for funding in a special meeting that's called for that purpose. Is that my understanding? I know Otis probably knows that, and Liz is probably out there.
Yeah, I am. That's correct. Nine months.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for answering. A question came up, and I'm staring at Counselor Forgie and Counselor Wheeler. I can't wait till we're in the same room so I don't have to like stare at you going, "Do you see me looking at you?" So I just want to speak to this. I too want to thank everyone that spoke tonight. And it's a difficult thing. I agree with Counselor Stempel Ray. It's hard to come before council and to say things. And I do appreciate that you know that this is a hard decision for us. But I know that out of it all, the police is something that we do need. I mean, I just saw the recent vandalism at the Center School. And I heard on the back of the Wilsons Building, there's vandalism that says "Fuck the police" there. And I just want to say that this is not why I live in this community for these type things. And so we have to get on the same page, and we have to work together. I know I met with the People's Budget, and we did a Zoom meeting one night. And I asked if I could invite, you know, Chief Hague, and they said they just wanted me. So I'm willing, whether I'm president or just a resident. I heard a lot of what you said tonight, everyone. And I'm willing to sit down in these type of meetings and talk about this because I do think it's important. I don't care that North Hampton or Brattleboro or anybody else is doing it. This is Greenfield. I care about Greenfield, and I care about our residents. So if we can work together and put something together without frustration and anger, and we can just start to plan things out, I agree with Counselor Wheeler. Like, I can vote for the building because we need the building. It houses our employees. They are doing a job. But we really need to respond to everyone who spoke tonight. So let's find a way to make that happen. Let's find a way that we can bring this together and move forward because I do think it's important. And like I say, I do count on the police. I have called them before. And I'm sorry for anything that is, you know, negative. But I wish all of you could have been at the Charter Commission meetings. And I know you all have jobs and stuff. But it's true. The Charter Commission is really working really diligently on working on the Public Safety Commission. And I know Chief Hague was even agreeing with that. And I also attended a forum on race, that he was a key presenter. That does not happen in all these other towns where their chief of police steps up and they speak out on race. And our chief does. So as a black woman, I have to say that I can trust in that. And that I want to work harder to make sure that you're all heard because I feel very heard. So again, thank you. And thank you all the counselors because I know this is a difficult decision and there's a lot to take in. But we are talking about the police building and our employees. So thank you. And let me see. I will do, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Just to acknowledge that this is a two-thirds vote that requires nine votes to pass. Counselor Jarvis?
I'm sorry, let me get to the mute button. Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
No.
Vice President Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. And yes.
With seven favorable votes, it does not meet the benchmark of two-thirds vote. The motion fails.
Okay. What is next? All right, so...
FY24 for the operating budget.
There's, yep, the mayor's operating budget? Yes. Have we said? I'm sorry. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. Point of order. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, Paragraph 7, requires city council to approve, reduce, or reject the mayor's budget within 45 days after the receipt of the budget. Otherwise, quote, "Such amount shall, without any action by the council, become a part of the appropriations for the year and be available for the purposes specified." Mayor Wiedegartner submitted the budget on April 1, 2021, exactly 48 days ago. Therefore, hasn't the FY22, excuse me, FY22 city budget already been accepted by default?
Madam Clerk and our parliamentarian, could you please step in?
I can, if that's acceptable.
Yes, please.
Our Charter, Section 5.5 on the budget, subsection, I'm sorry. Charter, Section 5.6, Action on the Budget. Subsection C, Action by the City Council. The City Council shall adopt the budget, with or without amendments, within 60 days after it receives the proposed budget. In amending the budget, the City Council may increase or decrease amounts and expenditures allowed under Section 32 of Chapter 44 of the General Laws. The 60th day will be May 28.
May I speak further, Madam President?
Yes, you may.
The Mass General Law, as far as I know, supersedes the Charter unless there is otherwise provided or providing a space for the city to accept. The Charter does not, cannot overrule Mass General Law without a provision. That's at least my understanding.
It is a provision.
Okay.
Isn't it Ricketts?
I'm just going to sit here looking good because I have no idea.
Parliamentarian Roberts is also on the call if you would like to have his opinion. And Liz Gilman.
Yes. Thanks, thanks a lot, Counselor Wheeler. This throws me, too. It doesn't necessarily fall under Roberts' rules, clearly. I honestly don't know what evolution of this is. I think it's up to the council to vote. You have nothing to lose by voting on this. And if it's overruled by Mass General Laws, it's overruled. Kathy, you have a better idea?
I should have continued reading the paragraph. It says, "If the City Council fails to take any action with respects to items in the proposed budget, within 60 days after it receives the proposed budget, such amount shall, without any action by the council, be part of the appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year and shall be available for the proposed specified." And again, Counselor Wheeler, I hear you saying that Mass General Law supersedes the Charter. But I believe when the Charter specifically lays out the process, that supersedes Mass General Law.
And the Charter was approved by the legislature.
That is correct.
Yes, yes.
So...
The current language, Liz Gilman does have her hand up, as does...
Yep. Director LaCerno as well. So I'll go with Liz Gilman and then Director LaCerno.
I'm going to put my thinking hat on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Mass General Law, I think Kathy's correct in terms of the Charter. However, there's also a lot of, like, the Charter says you have to conform to 3244, Section 32. There are also things called session laws that when you read the law, you don't see unless you have the full annotated law and you see it in the margins. So for example, you cannot increase the budget without adopting a statute that the city has not adopted. So when you read the Charter, it says per Chapter 44, Section 32, to increase or decrease. So the session law says you have to adopt to increase. So I believe with the parliamentarian that it doesn't hurt you to vote. And if you find out afterwards that it does need to be enforced, it's enforced. But I do believe it is 60 days because I believe the session law says something unless local statute describes otherwise. Something to that effect. So I think Director LaCerno wanted to speak.
Yes. Yeah. So I mean, I actually didn't think about that piece, Liz, because I don't have the statute in front of me. But I think typically, Mass General Law will supersede what the Charter says because it does allow for the cases where Mass General Law is changed and the city or town has not adjusted their Charter to meet that. It's always Mass General Law that supersedes it. So I think that council would vote. And then maybe we need to get a legal opinion after the fact.
Yeah, that's exactly what I, I agree with the parliamentarian as well. Yep.
But I think where I'm being confused right now is, I thought Counselor Wheeler was saying that he believes that per Mass General Law...
Yeah.
It's been 45 days, so the budget is in. We don't vote because it's already passed. Is that what you were saying, or am I...
That is the, that is the, what my, the point of my point of order, yes.
Right, right. So we don't have to, we're not voting if we're following Mass General Law because he's saying that it's past the 45 days. So the budget is enacted as is. I have all these scenarios kind of written down, and this was not one of them.
President Ricketts?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Stempel had her hand up.
Yep.
I phoned a friend.
Yeah.
I did. I asked former President Singer. And he seems to think that the Charter usually does not supersede MGL. Only when the... the Charter usually does not supersede MGL, only when, um, the, only when Mass General Law is what he says silent. And I don't think it's very silent on this issue.
President Ricketts, Counselor Gwynn would like to speak.
Counselor Gwynn, yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Gwynn, then, um, uh, let me get in line here. I, I see Counselor Gilmore and I see Counselor Disorga too. So Counselor Gwynn?
I think, um, Clerk Scott and Director Gilman were in agreement with you, but their suggestion is that we go ahead and vote and then if our vote is, uh, unnecessary because it has moved forward, our vote is still being taken. And if it does supersede it, we'll have a vote in place. That was my understanding of their recommendation.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Gwynn. Think I just needed somebody to say it back. Like, I get, thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
Um, yeah, so I think I'm gonna format this more as a comment than a question.
Okay.
So I'm not gonna argue against Mass General Law. If it says forty-five days, it says forty-five days. I would like to say that if someone knew about this before, like, five minutes ago, they probably should have let the town clerk know, city clerk, because this is valuable information for all of us who have been going through this budgeting information. And I would like to say, mostly to the public, because I don't think my colleagues recognize this, but what a chilling effect this has on democracy, that the legislative branch of our town government does not get to be a check or a balance on the executive.
Okay, um, thank you for that. And for the people writing in chat, please do not write in chat. Not everyone has the computer, they use their phones, so it's illegal. So please do not write in chat. Counselor Disorga?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment and I, from what Counselor Wheeler said, I think that, um, our Ways and Means Committee did take action on the budget. I don't know if that would have any reference with that. That was just my comment.
Okay, so, is it, Madam Clerk, are you saying we should just continue on? Or?
Uh, my belief is that the Charter does supersede Mass General Law. It's in this circumstance. Um, the reason it is specified in the Charter is that so we do not have to work under the umbrella of Mass General Law. Our Charter is specific to Greenfield only. Um, Mass General Law could have been used, could have been accepted, but this Charter language is specific to Greenfield and I would recommend that the council still consider the budget, the mayor's budget as proposed. Counselor Stempel has her hand up.
Yes, I was just about to, Counselor.
Sorry, I didn't know if you could see or not.
It's the one person that I can always see for some reason, yes.
Uh, hear or see, I'm very, uh, anyway, um, so, and I'm just thinking about when I served as Chair of Ways and Means, we always worked backwards sixty days. And so, it, it's my, it's my thinking that when it comes to this issue, I, I want to say that this came up when I first joined the council six years ago and I think the Charter did supersede. Um, and to the clerk's point, um, specifically, we made it sixty days because the forty-five felt like not enough time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, we're spending a lot of time going back and forth. What I suggest to do is just, uh, President Ricketts, is just move forward, vote, and then if we're not, then at least we voted and, and we moved on.
Okay, thank you so much. Mayor?
I, the only piece I want to add to this, very interesting conversation, um, never witnessed this in a city council meeting, budget meeting before.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, once you voted, I have ten days to, uh, approve, take no action, or veto.
Yep.
So, because I think there's enough question in people's minds here this evening, I, I'm not gonna tell you whether to vote it or not, that's not my job. Uh, but my job is to find out if it was done correctly or not. So I just want everyone to understand, if you do vote tonight, I will seek a lawyer's opinion on this, um, apparently very early in the morning.
Yep.
Because when you vote, I have ten days with which to get that back. Um, but we have a, a good legal team, so, um, just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. So we're gonna do deja vu, we're gonna do the mayor's operating budget. On page twenty-four. All right, here we go. Okay. Okay. Fiscal year twenty-one oh eighty-six. City of Greenfield, Massachusetts, the city council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weidergardner, in order to appropriate fifty-four million four hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two general fund operating budget, ordered that the sum of forty-five, forty-five million, seven hundred and two thousand five hundred and twenty, which in the full amount, which is, I believe that word should say, which is the full amount necessary for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two general fund budget, July one, twenty-twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, be appropriated for the purposes stated. To meet said appropriation, two hundred thousand dollars will be transferred from the parking meter receipts reserved and fifty thousand dollars from free cash, fifty-four thousand two hundred, oh, fifty-four million two hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred and twenty will be raised and appropriated. Majority vote required. Do I have a?
We need a second.
Second, Hirschfeld.
Thank you. Second, Hirschfeld. Okay. A recommendation?
The recommendation, um, at this point, well, the recommendation that came out of Ways and Means was that we voted the operating budget to be reduced by one hundred and seven five hundred, five hundred thousand, one hundred and seven five hundred thousand. Um, that was, uh, out of the salary line item for the assessors.
That just comes out of the expenditures.
Sorry? Okay. Um, I just thought somebody asked a question.
No.
Um, that was a split vote, uh, when it came out of Ways and Means. Uh, there were three that voted to reduce and two that did not.
Thank you. Okay.
President Stempel, uh, excuse me, President Ricketts.
You're back, Ashley.
She's saying, no, thank you. Um, I believe there was a, I believe there was a transposition of numbers when the budget number was first read. Just to clarify for everyone, the sum of fifty-four million four hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars is the full proposed budget, um, mayor's budget, just to clarify that number. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, do we want to do a roll call vote on that or do all the pieces?
You should have deliberations on the budget before a vote is taken.
Kathy, can you repeat that last thing you said? What was, that, what was the final number?
It, it's the one written on the paper.
I, I know, but I'm looking at two different numbers. The one that, uh, you know, we, we minus some number, the hundred and seven.
So that's the Ways and Means budget recommendation, that is not the mayor's budget as proposed?
Okay, so.
The mayor's, the mayor's budget as proposed is fifty-four million four hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred and twenty dollars.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, may I ask, um, Clerk something?
Yes.
Um, this would be procedural, do we have to go down each line item of the mayor's operating budget and have that voted by section and have discussion on those sections? Or do we just vote a bottom line at this point?
Um, historically, what has happened in the past few years that has worked very well, is you go through the budget to the, um, to the individual sections, for example, legislative, executive, um, total, financial, by going through it and reviewing the budget as proposed by the mayor, if someone on the council wished to propose an amendment to a specific salary, wages, or expenditure line, then during the review of that section, that counselor would, um, ask for the floor from the president and propose an amendment to that specific line item. And it would proceed that way throughout the, the full budget, um, onto the whatever ended up being the total, with or without amendments.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So, uh, Madam President, shall I begin?
Go for it.
Okay, here we go. City of Greenfield, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two general fund operating budget, legislative, town council, salary and wages, sixty-four thousand six thirty-eight, expenditures, ten thousand nine hundred, total town council, seventy-five thousand five hundred and thirty-eight. Any discussion or whatever?
Any questions, comments?
I have a quick question.
Who said that?
Uh, Counselor Gwynn. It has nothing to do with what, uh, Counselor Forgé just read, it's for clarification. Counselor Forgé, the recommendation coming out of Ways and Means was for the mayor's op, operating budget as read with a single line of a hundred and seven thousand taken out. That is the only vote that would have been considered a non-unanimous vote. There was nothing else objected by your committee, is that correct? Just so.
That is correct, Counselor Gwynn, that is correct.
Thank, I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, there was no other discussion on pieces that weren't there, that was my understanding. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. That's a great question, actually, so, yep. Okay. Anyone, um, Counselor Elmer?
Well, given that, uh, do we really have to go through the whole thing line by line?
Yeah, it was the whole city council.
Well, we, we could do it really quickly now that you know that Ways and Means was, you know, all for everything. And when it gets to that one line item, if somebody brings it up again, then we'll stall then, but we should be able to whip through this pretty quickly now, that we know that, unless something's changed.
President Ricketts, uh, Counselor Stempel Ray has her hand up.
Yep. She's not my eye thing anymore. Counselor Stempel Ray, go ahead.
I should be using the chat, my apologies.
No, that's fine.
I was just, I was just going to say, um, of course, Ways and Means has a recommendation and councillors may have made amendments there, but we have to be careful to allow other councillors outside of Ways and Means the opportunity to amend.
Okay.
And so while, it, it seems like we're just going back and forth for process, I say we just get right to, it, it might take a little longer, but I think it's an important process for, um, the budget to just go through department and then if there is none, then we just move on.
Yep, perfect. And so, for the first one, for the town council, um, there was no questions or comments. Okay? And Clerk Scott, do you want this to be roll call for each one of these?
So, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I was on mute. Um, so you don't need to vote each line, you only need to vote if there's a proposed amendment.
Okay, great. Okay, Counselor Forgé?
Thank you, Executive. Mayor, salary and wages, two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars, expenditure, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four, total expenditure, two forty-five, two fifty-five.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Executive of Administration, salary and wages, seventy-nine oh eighty-three, expenditures, six hundred dollars, total, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Questions or comments?
Economic Development and Market, salary and wages, fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars, expenditure, twenty-three thousand, two fifty, total expenditure, seventy-three thousand, four hundred and twenty-six.
Questions, comments?
Total Executive, three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars. Did you just go out?
Oh, I didn't read.
Oh.
Okay, Financial Administration, Reserve Fund, seventy-five thousand dollars. Accounting, salary and wages, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars, expenditures, one forty-three, eight hundred dollars, total expenditure, four eighteen, seven fifty-two. Independent Town Audit, sixty thousand. Assessors, salary and wages, I'm sorry, ninety-six thousand, six fifty-nine, expenditures, one hundred and twelve thousand, one ninety, total assessors, two hundred and eight, eight forty-eight, eight forty-nine, excuse me, eight forty-nine.
I object.
Counselor Disorga has her hand up.
Yes, I called her. Thank you.
I move to amend the expenditure line, um, to reduce the expenditure line by a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second, Gilmore.
Okay, it's been moved, second. Any comment?
May I speak, Counselor Ricketts?
Yes.
As councillors were asked, we spend a great deal of time looking at what and how we spend, but that's only half of our fiscal responsibility and yet it get, it gets most of our attention. We need to focus on the revenue piece. This year, we paid a firm a hundred and four thousand, four hundred dollars. Next year's budget to the same outside assessing vendor will be a hundred and seven thousand, five hundred. Thirty thousand dollars was voted for commercial revaluation several years ago that is not complete. If the job were getting done, I wouldn't be speaking tonight. I have been at meetings, sent emails, met with executives, and spoken about inaccuracies, missed growth, and more. We have two years to report and add new growth to the tax ba, base. We have missed a lot of the new growth. As councillors, none of us has the ability to determine who the assessing firm or individual will be. We vote yes or no on the expenditure line. By contract, RRG is supposed to conduct inspections of all properties for which building permits are requested and ensure that our records are accurate. This has not happened. RRG recently reduced the value of a house owned by a landlord who is by far this council's most well-known landlord. The value of his Chapman Street building was reduced from ninety-one thousand, five hundred to thirty-nine thousand, five hundred while this individual was in arrears. This happens often. The new growth that we did capture at a hundred percent were the seven new condominiums on Deerfield Street. Half of these were supposed to be affordable housing. They are two sizes, five hundred and sixty and seven hundred and eighty square feet. They are assessed at full value, one hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred to one hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred respectfully, respectively, the highest rate per square foot in the city. They are assessed higher than much larger, newer condominiums on Petty Plain Road and more than many rentals bought and sold for dollar. I'm stealing Counselor Stempel's line, a budget is a moral document. The above doesn't meet that standard. There are people each of us represent who. There are people each of us represent who cannot afford to stay in their homes because the tax burden is not shared equitably. They are paying for their own homes and a cement batching plant we ignored. It was my job to report this, and I did. No changes were made. It's my job to vote yes or no on a budget line. I vote no and ask you to do the same. Will the current hard-working staff, Kimberly Mew and Sandra Godoyah, in our assessor's office need help during this revow year and next year? Absolutely. A supplemental budget with a new field officer who has an interest in our community or a new firm, I am for that. I will gladly vote for this department to be staffed appropriately. The lack of equity in Greenfield assessing is not a secret. This statement may not be well received. However, in the end, I was elected to obey the laws and to tell the truth. I have voted for all the things that kept our city safe and our children educated. We will continue to vote for necessary expenditures. Several of us are asking tonight that all people pay for these things fairly. Assessing here needs fixing and oversight. Five years ago, we almost had a split tax rate because this very same issue needed fixing. Five years later, here we are. We missed a huge source of revenue on Legion Ave and elsewhere. Insanity is repeating the same mistakes and expecting different results. That's exactly what we are doing. This is not working. This vote concerns those who elected us. If we, as city councillors, actually believe that people are created equally, aren't we supposed to go to treat them all equally and tax them in a just manner? Thank you. Vote yes on the amendment.
Councillor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes.
These are wild accusations with no basis. In fact, I've sat through hours of testimony from the assessor's office, the chief assessor, and I've seen no evidence that any of this is true. I was more than willing to listen, even though Ways and Means was not necessarily the appropriate venue for that conversation. All I've seen is evidence of a lack of understanding of municipal assessing. The effect of this cut will decimate the assessing office in exactly the same way that the Department of Health was decimated by the former council and the former mayor. The council, this current council, will become a laughingstock because we did not staff an important fiscal, I'm sorry, department. It bothers me that the accusations are made again and again, and the proof is not there. I don't see it. What will happen is our chief assessor will quit. She will leave. She will go somewhere else. RRG, who knows, but will probably be in violation of our contract. We certainly won't be able to fund the contract. We won't be able to get anyone else to pick up a new contract because when we put assessing services out to bid, RRG was the only one who responded. We won't be able to hire a certified assessor because they aren't out there. DOR's local assessment chief said that. It takes years to train someone. We will not be able to staff this office. We will not be able to make the assessments that go into the valuations that this council seems to care so much about. I am on the verge of quitting my seat early in protest of how far this conversation has come. Thank you for listening to me, and I'm sorry that I've lost my cool.
Thank you, councillor Wheeler. Councillor Stempel Ray, and then councillor Dolan.
Councillor Bottomley was before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Bottomley.
Sorry, I had to unmute there. I do want to say that serious questions have been raised. These are serious questions about specific individual and commercial property assessments and tax abatements. And I feel these assessments are fraught with inconsistencies because they haven't been explained to us. We've asked specific questions. When we get, what we get back is a general comment on a specific thing. And that's what's really frustrating because we're here to ask questions. In the absence of meaningful responses to over a year's worth of inquiries from city councillors and community members, I think it's apparent that our assessing system has some flaws. I'm not 100% sure how to fix that, how to deal with it, but I'm in favor of cutting this budget line. I hope councillors will consider it because I don't believe ignoring these concerns or pretending that they don't exist is in the best interest of Greenfield's taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stempel Ray?
I sat in a council for four years that felt the same way that this action is coming across to me. If you're not happy with something, then just take the money away, and that's the only way that you can make a statement. And that's why I wanted to be president last year, was to change the flow of the council. I just disagree with that action and that statement. I did ask chair, just the EDC chair, Chair Schorger, to take this up at our EDC meeting in June, to ask the assessor's office and our vendor, whatever, for lack of a better term, to come and start a meaningful process to understand, seek to understand and don't assume. These wild, to councillor Wheeler's point, like we let these accusations and the rumor mill guide this body, to me, that's not moral. So when I, as the chair of Ways and Means, said that the budget is a moral document, we fund what we believe in, that statement, I think, has been taken out of context. I, if a budget is a moral document, by all means, let's not lose morality by pulling money as a means to bully our executive branch. Let's work with our executive branch because we all want the same thing. We want the best for the residents. And so what I propose instead tonight to my colleagues is let EDC take this up next month. Let's start a process with the mayor's office and with the assessor's office and the vendor to understand how we can get from where we are now, decide what the vision is we have for where we go, and determine how to get there together because this isn't good governing. We can't just strip money away without, A, understanding how the funding process works. I don't think there's an understanding, like councillor Wheeler is saying, we're not going to be able to fund anyone else if we strip it away and don't have the money and then rely on free cash or whatever the plan was. I don't think there was one. We have to be more thoughtful about what we do with our residents' money. We can't be brash. So for me, I will not be supporting this amendment, but I will be doing and putting in the work to create a better process. And then we can work together to do that with the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Dolan?
Yes, thank you. Perhaps a bit out of character, try to find a middle path on this one. This has been really challenging for me, this particular issue, and I've been back at it several times. I don't really see a clear, good decision on this from the position we're in now. I got to say, I've not seen convincing evidence that there's a major problem here. I've seen a bunch of anecdotes. I've heard a lot of allegations. There's a lot of talk. There's a lot of smoke. I'm not really sure that there's any fire. Maybe the evidence is out there, but I have not, to date, seen any evidence that we are necessarily anywhere off than other communities in this respect. Although I do think there are structural issues with the assessing system in the state that allow it to be gamed by powerful people. I think that's probably widely acknowledged. But that's not a Greenfield problem. At the same time, we have been dealing with assessing issues for my entire term. One of the first things I did when I joined the council was vote to appropriate money to reevaluate the commercial properties. We've never seen any outcome to that. And it does seem like both of the mayors that I've served under have been really reluctant to address this in a meaningful way. So I like to make data-informed decisions. I don't have data or conclusive evidence, one way or another, on this, and I would probably have to be, you know, an accountant or a forensic accountant to look at that data, even if I had it. But what I do have is a large number of people telling me that they're very upset, and that is also data. I don't see them getting less upset about this issue. So tentatively and with much trepidation, I'm going to vote in favor of this cut with the hope that we can hear what people are saying, be a responsive city, and hire a new assessment firm. Real estate values have gone up, what, 30, 40, 50% this year? So starting with a blank slate, if there ever was a good time, that time is now. So I would like to apologize to Chief Assessor Mew. I know this is going to make your life really difficult if this is passed. I've always seen the chief assessor as a consummate public servant, and I don't want to do that. But I do think this has reached a critical mass where we have to do something about it, and we have to be seen as responsive to people's concerns.
Thank you, councillor Dolan. Councillor Gwynn?
Thank you. I want to go back to something councillor Stempel Ray said a few minutes ago, and then we need a process and to move this on to a working process. I think that's the direction we have to really look at. We're not forgetting, but we're looking through, who wouldn't want accurate data? There's none of us. We all want the most accurate data possible. So councillor Disorga's venture to make sure we're getting accurate data is good. We want to be accurate. On the same course, this is a revow year. We can't start the process during a revow year and not do the revow. It could not happen if we did that. So you can't try to fix something by making it worse in the short term. The other thing that we seem to forget at times is we can't earmark what the executive side does with the money. So if we leave this portion of the assessor's budget, she could get rid of the chief assessor and the assistant and go with an outside firm for the remaining balance we leave. It doesn't necessarily mean she's going to go and get an outside firm changed. You know what I mean? We got to pay for the assessor, but it's her prerogative to do what she wants with the assessment budget. So we have to be very careful that we're not creating a problem within a problem. You know, I believe that, I don't think this is going to go away. I think we've opened the door and the eyes to a lot of people, our constituents, and I think we have to look at this. I don't think this is the year to cut that money from the budget. I believe we have to go forward with it. If the mayor then decides to review our outside service and works with the EDC, as was proposed tonight, I think that's working in the right direction. I cannot, at this point, favor going forward with this amendment because I think the short term is just going to be devastating during a revow year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Elmer?
Thank you. I'm going to repeat what many people have heard me say before. I was hoping that we could get from the assessor's office a spreadsheet that would list the 6,000 properties, when they were last assessed, when they were last inspected inside, what the change of assessment was, and what the reason for it was. I had a back and forth with the mayor today where she said, that's not really the council's job. That's her job. And I would suggest respectfully that that job hasn't been done, and I would urge the mayor to either have, one way or another, have a systematic study being made of the quality of the assessment. What hasn't been addressed is the apparent discrepancies that many of our, some of our councillors and many of our citizens have exposed. It seems like there's a problem. Maybe there isn't a problem, but we don't really know until it's studied. So with the proviso that I'd like to see the assessor's office studied systematically, I don't see how we can pull the budget out from underneath the assessor's office at this time. So I will be voting no on the amendment, but with that strong recommendation...
Lost to councillor Elmer. I think you were done.
...
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Mayo, and then councillor Forgie, then Jarvis.
I want to speak on this issue because I've had many people come up to me the minute it hit the recorder that they had a sense that something was wrong for not just one year, a couple of years. And I think it goes back to the prior mayor and has just continued. And it just has not seemed like a high priority. It's a, it's a, it almost seems to me like a backseat position in a lot of people's eyes, even though it's not. And now it appears to be a front-seat position in a lot of our constituents' eyes because there's been a lot of things, money-wise, happening in this particular year, and this is just one other thing that has been, that they don't feel good about, Greenfield about. I can't tell you how many times I've sat in Bonnie's diner and had this topic been spoken about between two people and saying that people want to leave Greenfield because of this inequity. So we're here to represent the residents and be stewards of their money. That doesn't, we vote it to the executive branch so that they can do the best that they can, but that doesn't mean that they get free rein of it. It means that we're stewards as councillors. So we have an obligation to speak for them, and I feel like I'm doing that tonight, and I will vote yes with councillor Disorga. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Forgie?
Thank you, Madam President. When we discussed this in Ways and Means, many of the same comments I've heard this evening were the comments that were discussed in committee. I have a couple of things that I need to add. First, referencing once again the charter work that is coming forward, we have spent a lot of time on a number of different areas, including public safety and the assessor's office. What we tackled was the structure of the office, and I believe that the recommendations that are coming out from Charter Commission to the full council will go a long way in establishing a process which is clear and well-defined. The mayor was also part of the discussions that we had in Charter. So I know that she will be on board with what we are trying to do at this moment. I also share the belief that, my personal opinion is that I would like to see the restoration of another employee into the assessor's office vis-à-vis a field assessor. That seemed to be a very good fix originally when the charter went into effect, and I do believe that the office itself was depleted for other reasons. And I think that the people we have there right now... And I think that the people we have there right now are dedicated, willing to work very hard to get us up and running again. You know, perception is everything. It may not be your truth or my truth, but it is the perception of things at this point. And it's up to this council to take a leadership role in trying to work through the perception and get to the answers. I think that's extremely important. I think that that will satisfy a lot of questions that taxpayers may have. And it will also clarify.
Could people mute?
I did just mute them. Thank you.
Okay. Except for you, Counselor Forgie. Continue.
Thank you. So I do feel strongly that there is a process ahead of us. And I, for one, am going to be involved in that from a number of different venues. Having said that, I feel it is the wrong time to cut the assessor's budget. We are going into a revow. That takes an awful lot of effort. And we really need to get some very good, solid numbers under us as a starting point for us to move forward. And so, having said all that, I will not be voting in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jarvis.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to remind city councillors that this is a revow year. The revow year is a very lengthy process in due, and so it's about a 12-month process. A procurement has to be written, sent out for another agency to come in. And every time we send one out, we get IRG. If I was IRG and the assessor's office, I would pass the message on IRG. You know what? Our fund it almost got cut because of you guys. Maybe we put a shot across their bow. This will be a shot across their bow on a wake-up call. Maybe they better step up to the plate and do a little bit better if they want to be hired by the city of Greenfield. But this is not the year. We owe it to our citizens to have a proper assessment done. And if we interrupt that process by three, four months trying to find a new company coming in, what kind of work are we going to get out of that next company coming in? Because they're going to be rushed to get the numbers into the assessors in the amount of time that they need to be. So I think there's other avenues that we could discuss later on. I don't think that this is the time to cut the budget and pull the rug out from underneath them. I think it would hurt our taxpayers' tax base, our growth, more than it would help.
Okay. Thank you. So I do want to say that I heard at the last EDC meeting that Counselor Stempel Ray reached out to the Chair, Counselor Disorga, to say that she would like to have like a workshop on this and have IRG and have the assessors at a meeting, and so would Ways and Means. So I reached out to the clerk and found out that, yes, those two committees could have a joint meeting. So most likely in June, we can do a joint meeting to discuss this. So that's the good news. Where I'm lost is why would we cut a budget and then ask for training the next month? What, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me. It's so irresponsible. And we, there's nothing that we can do. And I please wish that people would mute. So I will not vote for this because I don't, I don't want the headlines. It doesn't make us look smart. It doesn't make us look good at all. It looks like we're doing this, but we're asking for help to understand it later down the line. I'd rather have IRG in front of us and show them these specific examples and say what you think is going on. Please, people. And because right now, I'm with Counselor Wheeler. I'm so over this because I feel like we're bordering on, you know, when we talk about there's corruption and that we don't trust certain people and we almost give away an address of somebody. And that's not how we do business. We are better than this. And we're professionals. And the way that this is being handled, I don't think is professional. So do I believe that there are discrepancies? I do. I do think this is a wake-up call, and we need to now do a better job. But cutting money is just spiteful. It doesn't change anything. And so what if we cut it, and they find another way to fund it, and they put it out for bid? The RFP and the same vendor answers. What did we just solve? What did we do? Let's work internally first, and we can do this. So I can't vote for it. I can't be part of this. I do appreciate all the homework that's gone into it. But we have to make sense when we do this. We should follow a process. And so, yes, I'm with Counselor Stempel Ray, Counselor Forgie. Let's sit down. Let's hear from the city. Let's hear from the mayor. Let's hear from the assessors. Let's hear from IRG. And whether we do a field person or what. I just want us to stay in our lane at the same time. Let, we're checks and balances type of government. Let them know where we're unhappy and what examples we have and what we can do from there on. So I too want to apologize to our assessor's offices. Must be very hard to hear and to see, especially when it happened in other mayors. And it's like, we feel like our current mayor, like, what did she do? And why isn't this like a priority and right away? Well, you know, the pandemic hit. And considering all that's happened, I feel like we are in pretty great shape. So I don't know. We could work together. I'm really tired of this yanking money to try to prove some point. Thank you. And let me see, Counselor Mayo, did you want to speak again?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure I got to a great order.
I want to say I am in no way blaming the assessor. Kim, I don't, I do not think that this is her fault whatsoever. But I do think there does need to be another assessor. I'm not sure where that's coming from, but anyway, I do think that there needs to be another assessor in there because I don't think that there, this isn't the first year that this has happened. Residents have many questions about uncollected money, the property values. And, you know, looking for, looking, I mean, some people have attributed to looking for nickels and dimes in the sofa. And that is to pay the bills because they haven't got the money that they should have gotten with a proper assessment. I think hiring another assessment or another assessment, I don't want to get rid of the assessor that's there. I want to give her more help that's in there, help that's going to be helpful and not detrimental. But, and if that turns out to be another corporation other than our IRG or whatever the name of the company is, I don't think that we should be inviting them back. If they're the only ones that apply for the assessing one, I think we can go, you know, cast a net out to get another assessor. And I think we can get one for $107,000 or less.
Thank you.
Is what do we tell the residents? Where's this lost money that they've, you know, lost for three years or more? I can't tell them where that money went.
Counselor Stempel Ray. Are you on mute?
I moved the question.
Okay. Motion to move question?
Second.
Non-debatable.
Second party.
Non-debatable, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Jarvis.
No.
This is, you're voting on moving the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yes, move the question.
I thought it was not.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorga? Counselor Bottomley? Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie? Chris Forgie, I believe you are on mute.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The question is moved unanimously. The motion on the floor to be voted is a reduction in the assessor's line expenditures in the amount of $107,500. This will require a majority vote.
Okay, so people could say yes or no really slowly.
Counselor Jarvis?
Okay, I'm on board with now. It's no.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorga?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Elmer?
No.
Counselor Forgie?
No.
Counselor Stempel Ray? Does the President wish to vote?
Yes. No. Yes, I want to vote. My answer is no.
Thank you. The amendment does not pass. It did not receive a majority vote.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Skill Wednesday, right? Okay, Counselor Forgie.
Yep. Where next is Treasurer Collector's salary and wages, $170,825. Expenditures, $52,360. Total, $223,185. Tax title, $67,500. Total Financial Administration, $1,053,300. Sorry, 200. No, is it two or three? I can't see it. I'm sorry.
It's two.
286,000. Thank you. My glasses are not, okay.
Point of order. I think we need to reread that. I think it was read wrong.
Okay, which one? Total?
The total line.
Okay, I am seeing $1,053,286.
Correct.
Okay. Onto the next. Operation Support, Legal. Labor Legal Services, $95,000. Town Attorney Services, $100,000. A total of $195,000. Human Resource Office, Salary and Wages, $218,144. Expenditures, $23,401. Total Human Resources, $241,545. Greenfield Technology Department, Salary and Wages, $274,813. Expenditures, $359,450. Greenfield Technology, $634,263. Total Operations Support, $1070,808. Licensing and Registration, Town Clerk, Salary and Wages, $137,692. Expenditures, $18,275. Total Town Clerk, $155,967. Elections, Salary and Wages, $33,545. Expenditures, $16,450. Total Elections, $49,995. Board of Registros, Salary and Wages, $3,500. Expenditures, $10,850. Total Board of Registros, $14,350. Licensing Commission, Salary and Wages, $35,542. Expenditures, $950. Total Licensing Commission, $36,492. Land Use and Development, Conservation Committee, $600. Planning Board, $600. Zoning Board of Appeals, $600. Planning and Community Development, Salary and Wages, $94,455. Expenditures, $17,600. Total Planning and Community Development, $112,055. Total Land Use and Development, $113,855.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
The total licensing and registration number is $256,804. I don't believe that was read. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. I thank you.
Sorry for the interruption.
Nope, that's okay. Thank you. Other General Government, Central Services, Salary and Wages, $65,320. Expenditures, $221,276. Total Central Services, $286,596. Central Maintenance, Salary and Wages, $409,539. Expenditures, $111,313. Total Central Maintenance, $520,852. Energy Department, Salary and Wages, $96,019. Expenditures, $707,770. Total Energy, $803,769. Total Other General Government, $1,611,217.
Point of order?
Yes.
I think there was a number read wrong there. Energy Department expended, shoot, sorry.
Energy Department expenditure line, $707,750 is clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to turn the Public Safety piece over to Counselor Jarvis, who's a member of our Ways and Means, to continue reading.
Okay, hopefully I don't have a lot of point of orders here. Public Safety, Police Department, Salaries and Wages, $3,326,601. Expenditures, $339,938. Total Police, $3,666,539. Parking Enforcement, Wages and salaries and wages, $67,752. Expenditures, $76,000. A total, $143,752. Dispatch Center, Salary and Wages, $594,675. Expenditures, $3,000. Total Dispatch Center, $597,675. Fire, Salary and Wages, $2,310,957. Fire, Salary and Wages, $2,310,957. For a total fire of $2,534,812. Building Inspector, Salary and Wages, $166,622. Expenditures, $7,500. Total Building Inspections, $174,122. Plumbing and Wire Inspectors, $96,450. Sailor of Weights and Measurements, $10,000. Animal Inspection Inspector, $3,000. Emergency Management, Salary and Wages, $5,500. Expenditures, $13,985. For a total Civil Defense, $19,485. Animal Control Officer, Salary and Wages, $25,494. Expenditures, $1,418. Total Animal Control, $26,912. Total Public Safety, $7,272,747.
Doesn't it, Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Jarvis tipped his fireman hat, um, and he referenced, uh, Total Emergency Management as, um, I, I, he, I think he misquoted the reference, um, to emergency services. So I just want the, the, uh, Total Emergency Management line of $19,485 to be correctly reflected in the reference.
Thank you. You be careful now, Counselor Jarvis. That's it, that's one.
That's, oh, sorry.
You tipped your fireman hat.
That hat, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Jarvis. I wanted to call upon Counselor Bottomley from our Ways and Means. If you would please, would you read Education and, uh, Public Works Budget and other DPW-related expenses?
Yes. Uh, Education, Greenfield Public Schools, $19,731,80. Franklin Tech, $1,328, uh, $1,328,809. Smith Vocational, $36,800. Total Regional Schools, $1,365,609. Total Education, $21,96,689. Public Works Operating Budget, Salaries and Wages, $1,579,605. Expenditures, $588,639. Total Operating Budget, $2,001, uh, $2,168,244. Snow and Ice Removal, $76,000. Uh, that's Salary and Wages, sorry. Expenditures, $141,800. Total Snow Removal, $217,800. Total Public Works, $2,386,044. Other DPW-related expenses, Street Cleaning, $34,650. Trash Disposal Fees, $229, uh, $429,000. Total Cemetery, $7,556. Total Other, uh, sorry. On Human Services?
No, no. Total DPW.
Total D, Other DPW, sorry. $471,206.
Okay, I will stop you there and thank you. Counselor Disorder, could you continue, please?
Certainly. Uh, Human Services, Health Inspection Service, Salary and Wages, $193,635. Expenditures, $15,848. Total Health Inspection Service, $209,483. Council on Aging, Salary and Wages, $135,220. Expenditures, $4,050. Total Council on Aging, $139,270. Veterans Services, Salary and Wages, $224,866. Expenditure, $300,500. Total Veteran Services, $525,366. Domestic Violence Prevention, $800. Human Rights Commission, $300. Disability Access Commission, $300. Youth Commission, $1,500. Total Human Services, $877,019. Culture and Recreation, Library, Salary and Wages, $558,963. Total Library, $679,713. Recreation, Salary and Wages, $193,954. Total Recreation, $193,954. Historical Commission, $1,100. Total Culture and Recreation, $874,767. Want to keep going?
Um, we're on to, uh, Debt Service. I would like to ask Counsel Mayo?
Okay. Uh, Bonded Debt Principal is, uh, $1,355,500. Uh, Rounded Debt Interest, $486.85.
That's, that's $486 and $85.
Right. Or $85, yeah, that's correct. Uh, Short Term Interest, uh, $30,000. Total Debt Service, $1,871,585.
Thank you. I'll finish, I'll finish it up if it's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Miscellaneous, this would be the FERCOG Core Assessments, $92,543. Contributory Retirement, $5,270,37. Workers' Compensation, $387,045. Unemployment Comp, $120,000. Employees' Health Insurance, wow, $8,038,000. Life Insurance, $116,790. Medicare Match is $480,000. Liability Insurance are $538,164. Total Miscellaneous, $15,42,591.
President Ricketts?
Yes. Yes.
The FERCOG Core Assessment, um, just for a point of care, clarification is $92,554. And the Workers' Compensation line is $387,046. I believe a few numbers were transposed.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can fire me, it's good.
That's all right. You're hired.
Okay. Total Operating Budget, $54,000, oh, why did I put my life here? Are we good?
Yeah. Okay.
All right, are we all set?
Yeah. I need a motion, I guess, right?
No, the motion is, the motion is already on the floor.
Right.
It was made and seconded.
Okay. Okay.
President Ricketts, would you like to ask for discussion? I know you don't.
Any, any comments or questions on the full operating budget?
I, I would like to say one thing. Um, I had, um, a little birdie whisper in my ear and send me some documentation that I found, uh, that was found in a July 2020 DLS City Budget Processing Frequently Asked Questions. To cut to the long and the short of it, the first sentence is, assuming there are no other relevant city charter provisions or special acts establishing a different process for the approval of the budget. So in other words, if there is a separate act or special language outlining the city budget process, that is the process to be used. If that process is not established, then the process is guided by mass general law.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. And thank you, Birdie.
Yes.
Okay. So where are we?
Um, if there's no discussion on the budget, you could call for a vote.
Yes. So this is on the mayor's operating as...
Operating budget.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder? Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan? Counsel Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer? Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The operating budget, as the mayor proposed, passes unanimously.
Okay. Next. Okay, all right. Counselor Forgé? Thank you. Um, order number... Order number Fiscal Year 21-091, the City of Greenfield. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor, uh, Mayor Weida Gardner, an order to appropriate $100,000 from OPEB, OPEC stabilization, ordered that the sum of $100,000 be transferred from Fund 8406, OPEC stabilization, to reduce the fiscal year 2022 tax rate. Two-thirds vote required. Second, Disorder?
Thank you. Okay, it's been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes, no recommendations.
President Ricketts, did you want to ask for a recommendation from the Ways and Means Committee?
Yeah, what'd you say?
Um, well, all of these, um, articles came out of Ways and Means with a unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gwynn.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan? Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Order number Fiscal Year 21-087, City of Greenfield. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner, an order to establish spending limits on revolving funds, ordered that the City Council authorize the following revolving funds' spending limits in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, for fiscal year 2022. Receipts received but not expended in fiscal year 2022 shall be carried over to fiscal year 2023 unless otherwise indicated in the attached. No further appropriations shall be made in excess of the balance of the fund, nor shall total expenditures for the fiscal year exceed the annual spending limit as noted. The aggregate amount of all revolving fund spending limits is not to exceed $540,950. Majority vote required. Second, Disorder?
Thank you for the second. Is there any questions or comments?
Roll call vote. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld? Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
President Ricketts?
Yes and yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Counselor Forgé? Yep. Fiscal Year 21, uh, in Order 088. The City of Greenfield, the City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner, an order fiscal year 22 Water Enterprise Appropriations, $1,403,465. Ordered that the sum of $1,403,465 be appropriated for the fiscal year 22 Water Enterprise Fund, and that $472,839 be included in appropriation from the General Fund for Water Enterprise indirect costs to be allocated to the Water Enterprise Fund for funding, and that $1,403,465 be raised from water user rates receipts for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Majority vote required. Second, Disorder?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel Ray?
Yes.
Vote.
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Counselor Forgé? Thank you. Order number Fiscal Year 21-089, City of Greenfield. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Weida Gardner, an order fiscal year 22 Sewer Enterprise Appropriation, $2,247,635. Ordered that the sum of $2,247,635 be appropriated for the fiscal year 22 Sewer Enterprise Fund, and that $433,793 be included in appropriation from the General Fund for sewer indirect costs to be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, and that $2,247,635 be raised from sewer user rate receipts, see for fiscal year starting July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. Majority vote required.
Second, by Mayo.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley. Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
She'll be right back. Please continue.
I'll come back to her. Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld. Counselor Elmer. Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray.
Yes.
Is Counsel, Vice President Gilmore back?
Nope.
Uh, does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
And Counselor Gilmore, are you back yet? She is not back. Would you like to wait or continue?
Um, let's, let's continue. We have a majority.
I'm sorry. Could someone tell me what number we were on?
This is FY 21-089, the Sewer Enterprise Appropriation, $2,247,635. Do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Order number fiscal year 21-090, this, the city of Greenfield. The city council upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner and order fiscal year 22 G C E T, GSET Enterprise Appropriation, $1,771,602. Ordered that the sum of $1,771,602 be appropriated for the fiscal year 22 GSET Enterprise Fund and that $97,879 be included in appropriation from the general fund for GSET Enterprise indirect costs to be allocated to the GSET Enterprise Fund for funding and that $1,771,602 be raised from GSET user rate receipts for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022.
Second, Mayo.
Required.
Second, Mayo.
Thank you. Okay, it's made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Oh, who said yes, sorry.
I don't see that anyone has questions.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan. Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer. Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray.
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Order number fiscal year 21-096, the city of Greenfield. The city council upon recommendation of Mayor Weider Gardner and in accordance with mass general law, ordered that the city council approve the donation of two temporary parcel, parcel easements and one permanent parcel easement at Seven Wisdom Way as part of the R O W Right of Way, an acquisition process for the Wisdom Way Reconstruction Project. Majority vote required.
Second, Disorder.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Um, yes.
Counselor Forgé, just as a reminder, what was the rationale in these easements, um, given the fact that it's not usually, you know, something we do as a regular part of the budget process, you know, is, what was the quick rationale for that, just for the people wondering, uh, about easements?
Sure. Um, this, Director Werner, um, told us that, uh, the Right of Way is an, is part of a, a, a project that they're working on right now on the Wisdom Way Reconstruction of the road. And basically, um, it's easements, the parcel easements are all on property that's owned by the city. But in the case, there are two permanent easements, one temporary easement on River Street. And there has, there, there's a certificate of donation, an appropriate plan sheets showing the, the city's easements and the purpose for them. So when the city council votes in donate, in favor of the donation, the council president may sign the certificate of donation. So it's basically, we're granting easements to ourself for the Wisdom Way project. Wisdom Way, right, Wisdom Way project.
Are you okay with that, Counselor Gwynn, or would you like Director Werner?
No, I don't think we need that much clarification. I just, I know we have people watching, people think it's just something that's not in the ordinary. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Let me see.
Counsel. Would you like me to take a roll call vote, President Rickets?
Yeah, yeah, let's vote on that.
Okay. Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Counselor Dolan.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counselor Forgé.
Yes.
Counselor Stumpel Ray. Would the president like to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may.
Okay, um, Counselor Jarvis.
Yes, I'd like to invoke section, uh, this next motion, and I'm opposed to it being read under section 2.9 of the city council charter. Um, I'm opposed to it being read, this motion being read this month. Under 2.9, section B of the city charter.
Okay, thank you. And then Counselor Gwynn, are you asking me?
Counsel, Counselor Rickets, I am also opposed to this being read at this particular time. Uh, we have a lot of business this evening. We've been at it for quite a long time, and I'd rather see this postponed off until next meeting. Thank you.
Uh, President Rickets, I also would like to see some more, uh, information that was, uh, brought to, uh, attention, um, on this before we go forward with this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have three counselors, so this will come up at the June council meeting. So moving right along, it'll be Counselor Gwynn with, um, mayor's appointments and reappointments. Um, it's page 54, everyone.
I move that the order that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointments and reappointments by the mayor. Housing Authority Reappointment, Randy Parks' term expires June 30th, 2024. Board of Registars Reappointment, David Levenduski, term expires April 30th, 2024. Parking and Traffic Commission Reappointment, George Ghoul, term expires June 30th, 2023. Franklin County Technical School Committee, Michael McIntyre, term expires December 31st, 2021. As a reminder, this is the rest of the term of Christopher Joseph. Community Preservation Committee, the, our new, uh, new committee there. Uh, Travis Drury Conservation Commission Appointment, term expires June 30th, 2024. John Pisiglià Historical Commission Appointment, pointee, term expires June 30th, 2023. Thomas Guarino Housing Authority Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2023. Barbara Zaccio Recreation Commission Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2022. Mark Maloney Planning Board Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2022. Susan Worgaftik Council President Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2024. Whisky Rohrbacher Council President Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2022. Garth Shainefelt Mayoral Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2023. Yanis Chabani Mayoral Appointee, term expires June 30th, 2024.
Second, Disorder.
So, um, that was a Disorder second on that. Um, just to, uh, give you the, uh, recommendation, these were a positive unanimous recommendation from appointments and ordinances. Um, one comment, just so people are with me, the reason the CPC committee has different dates, it's so this will be the first time that all of the appointees are, are recommended because it's a new committee after this year. Obviously, they're staggered in increments so that there'll be new people coming and going from the committee, um, but once it's established.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do you wanna do the roll call vote or they don't?
Certainly. Counselor Jarvis.
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn.
Yes.
Counselor Disorder.
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore.
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler.
Yes.
Counselor Mayo.
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Elmer.
Yes.
Counsel Forgé.
Yes.
Ray.
Oh, sorry, you, you blinked out a little bit. Uh, my vote is yes.
Does the president wish to?
Okay.
Does the president wish to vote?
Oh, yes and yes. Oh, sorry, you didn't hear me, sorry.
That's okay, sorry. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Report of committees. Unfinished business?
I have a question. If I can bring this up under unfinished business, I just did a quick Google search on my phone, 'cause I don't have the charter in front of me, but I think 2-9 is only about ordinances.
Ordinances and other measures, if you read it, section, uh, section B.
Right, so this has come up on the council before where we'll discuss something, and people can object to voting on it the same night we start discussing it, but it doesn't mean that we skip the discussion.
Um, Madam Clerk is raising her hand.
Yes. It says on the first on the first occasion that the question of adopting any measure is put to the city council except an emergency measure is defined in subsection A, if three members object to taking of a vote, the vote shall be postponed until the next regular or special meeting of the city council.
So the vote, but not the discussion. When this has come up in the path, we've still had the discussion, and then we vote at the next meeting. But I, I clearly remember this coming up. That was how I learned about this charter section in the first place, as a new council.
Madam Clerk?
Sure. Um, so I agree with you, uh, Vice President Gilmore, that it has been objected to in the middle of deliberations and discussions prior, uh, but this objection came prior to the vote being taken. If the parliamentarian would like to, uh, give an opinion on this, I would welcome that, but I, I believe that is acceptable to object to the vote prior to, um, discussion happening.
I would agree with that. Did, did that come through?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know if you came through clearly, Will. I didn't hear.
I, I would agree with that completely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, parliamentarian. Um, all right, so unfinished business, okay, old business. New business, I do have one piece of new business. Madam Clerk, I would like to dedicate a page of today's agenda to James Allen, who was on the planning board for many years.
Thank you.
Okay, motions for reconsideration? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Elmer.
Second, Gilmore. I heard Counselor Elmer and Counselor Gilmore.
Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
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 No roll call needed.
Good job, everybody.
And the time is 10:00 PM. And the time is 10:00 PM.